Norris getting their braces on today.
Oh.
Meeting to order at six o'clock sharp. And I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Arlen?
A second.
No, okay, second, and then we have to do a roll call.
Okay, Kate?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sorry. Bruce?
Yes.
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Okay, then at this point, we will move into across the hallway, I think. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Angie, are you staying in here?
Yeah, you can wait.
Okay.
I'm Melissa and Lauren here.
They're on their way. Yep, Dr. District Melissa's in place. Come on, Lawrence. All right, I'm going to start the webinar now, and then you can, because it takes a minute for-
Yep. Got you. Okay. 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 Open session. Okay. Yeah, you can wait.
Okay.
I'm Melissa and Lauren here.
They're on their way.
Okay.
Yep, Dr. District Melissa's in place. Come on, Lawrence. All right, I'm going to start the webinar now, and then you can, because it takes a minute for-
Yep. Got you. Okay. 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 Okay, how we doing, Angie? We good to go?
Anytime.
All right, we're back in open session, and next, we have a work session. In order to, let me see where I'm going here. To review the 21-22 virtual school planning survey results, Melissa, Lauren, take it away.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we shared with you some preliminary information about virtual planning for next year. Since that time, we were able to send a survey out to our families to gather some feedback, and principals facilitated conversations with their building leadership teams to gather more information, and that's on top of the questions that we gathered from you two weeks ago to help further our planning and our process. Angie's working on sharing a slide deck up on the screen in a minute, but I can share with you kind of some reminders of where we were at for our current enrollment for this year. So currently this year, at CEPS, there were 36 families who chose homeschooling, or their children were below the seven-year mark, that is the compulsory age for attendance, so they may not formally be in homeschooling, but they're not attending in-person either.
Thirty-six, you said?
Thirty-six, yep. And there are 40 families at CEPS age K through 2 who are attending WEVA this year. So a total of 76 families at CEPS. At WABISA, grades 3 through 5, there are 20 families at WEVA, and the number of families in the in-house virtual option has dropped each month from February down to May. So we started at 54 students, and now we're down to 22 students in 3rd through 5th grade who are doing the WABISA virtual option. And as a reminder, the way that that system works currently, we have three full-time teachers at WABISA, one at 3rd grade, one at 4th grade, one at 5th grade, who are teaching those 22 students.
So they teach virtual only?
They teach virtual only. At the middle school, there are 17 students at WEVA, and the number of students at the IMMS virtual option has dropped from 117 back in February to 60 students currently. At the middle school and at the high school, the virtual option looks like concurrent teaching. So those 60 students at the middle school are learning at the same time as the in-person students, they're zooming in to those in-person classes. The high school has 20 students attending WEVA currently, and down from, started at 227 students who are attending virtually only at the high school, now it's about 163 students. When we started our planning two weeks ago, we shared with you that we were considering offering an in-house virtual option for grades K through 12 next year, but we were looking to gather more information from families, teachers, and the board. The board shared questions with us that included questions about what's the minimum number of students needed for us to offer a virtual in-house option, and also wondering, well, one of the questions was, would families maybe feel more comfortable with in-person education when vaccines were available? In the last two weeks, as you know, now vaccines are available to anyone whose age is 12 and up, and there is a possibility that more availability for ages for vaccines will be available as we move towards the fall. In the survey results, and Jeff, would you mind handing out some documents? We shared this with the board via email, but this is a printout of what was shared with you last week with survey results. There's a lot of information in there, including a summary of the comments that we received from families. We did read through all of the comments and summarize what we heard from families, and reviewed that as an administrative team, and shared it with you all. We heard from, first of all, we took the survey results, and we did have student names this time, which was different from some of our past surveys, so we were able to remove duplicate answers if, you know, two parents filled it out for one student. Fortunately, every single time, both parents indicated the same answers, which was really helpful, but we were able to remove those duplicate answers, and we ended up hearing back from 970 students out of a projected enrollment for next year of 2,358. So it was about a 41% response rate in the survey. Of those responses, a total of 60 students indicated a preference for WEVA or an in-house virtual option, or that they were undecided. Another notable feature from the survey results that we heard is, of the students who are currently attending virtually, 80% of those indicated that they were planning to attend in-person next school year.
Is that district-wide?
Yes. District-wide, so we-
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent. We asked families, how are you attending now, and how are you anticipating attending next year? So when we looked at the families who are currently at WEVA, homeschool, in-school, or in-house virtual, all of those non-in-person options, 80% of those people said in-person for next year.
It's hard to probably extrapolate that for the ones who didn't, but it gives you at least an indication that it's moving that way.
It is, and we could, you know, we looked at it a couple different ways to get some extrapolated figures, and it gets a little bit in the weeds, but the weeds are a fun place to be sometimes. So this is not, this is new information from what we've shared with you, but we can make a guess. We know what the people who responded said, and for other people, we could make a guess. And we made a guess two different ways, and one way is by saying, okay, at WABISA, for example, WABISA's a little bit cleaner than CEPS, because CEPS doesn't have an in-house virtual option, but at WABISA, we heard back from 27 students who are not currently attending in-person, and of those 27 families that we heard back from, 12 of them indicated a preference for in-house virtual or undecided. So of our current virtual kids, 44% of them at WABISA said, we'd like an in-house virtual option, or we're not sure yet. So if you kind of take that to, currently, we have a total of 42 WABISA kids who are attending virtually. If we say, okay, 44% of the 42, how many would that be? Well, that'd be 19 kids for WIS. Now, from the actual survey responses at WIS, it was 15. So, you know, one way to estimate, maybe it would be as high as 19. Keep in mind, with the survey responses, we really tried to target our virtual families. In the email we sent about it, we really emphasized, we're really hoping to hear from people who are interested in virtual, and we also sent the survey twice to the kids who are not currently attending in-person. So if anything, our virtual families were oversampled, because we really targeted them in messaging, and we sent it to them twice. So that 15, you know, maybe it's as high as 19, but it's likely not to double. The other way we calculated kind of a projection to see is we say, well, let's look at the school as a whole. Looking at the school as a whole from WABISA, we heard from 202 students, and 15 indicated a preference for in-house virtual, so that's 7% of the total. So what would 7% of the WABISA population be? That'd be 37 students. So, you know, we actually heard from 15 WABISA families, maybe it's as high as 19, maybe it's as high as 37, but again, those would probably be the very top end for the total number of students at the school, not even in just one grade. So if you're thinking, 37 is a very top-end estimate for WABISA, split between three grades, we're looking at, maybe, if it falls exactly evenly, 12 students per grade.
You suppose the response is, at the level it is, which is what, about, I don't know, 45%, something like that? Do you think maybe the folks that have their kids in-person maybe didn't feel a real sense of urgency to do anything with the survey, because they're not going to do virtual or don't care to?
That could, you know, the messaging was, we'll have a full five-day-a-week in-person option. We're also looking at alternates, so some families could have said, well, my needs are going to be met with the full in-person. I mean, honestly, it's May, and families are quite busy with a lot of obligations, and they get quite a few emails from school, so that could have, you know, there could be some families who are quite passionate about virtual options who didn't respond as well.
I think the way that you guys wrote the email indicated you really were looking to hear from the virtual families, not the in-person families, so, like, personally- So, like personally, my family, we, like, my husband didn't think we needed to respond. He was just going to ignore it and then I responded. But, but my point being that for in-person families, I don't think they saw it as something that needed to be responded to.
One more slide, Angie. So throughout the survey and the comments, we received many questions and we were able to kind of group them into categories. So the first kind of theme was what mitigation strategies will be in place for next school year. And really, the district will continue to follow Public Health Madison Dade County's requirements through their orders. That is what we have done all year. And also, the vaccine is currently available for individuals 12 years old and older. And there may be different requirements for individuals who are vaccinated as opposed to those who are not. As we're seeing with the CDC guidance, there are, there are some guidance around wearing a mask or not wearing a mask depending on your vaccination status. So I think that is just going to be, we have to wait and see. But we will continue to follow public health orders and guidance through there.
Dade County's going to report tomorrow, aren't they?
The, the last email I got from Public Health was that they were, they were going to review and hopefully come out with something this week. So sometimes they have given a date and it's, it's, we never know.
Oh yeah, I understand.
But yes, I would, I would anticipate that something would come out this week. Another kind of theme was, what if there is a variant or our health situation gets worse? How will the school respond? And, you know, for three of our board members, last October, you approved reverse metrics. And then throughout, I think in December and again in February, we revised those metrics to look at the different steps. So we don't, we don't believe we're going to move away from those reverse metrics. We will need to add a new one because we will be in step 5, which is our full attendance. But we are still looking to continue with our reverse metrics, which means we could move a single classroom or a building or the district from step 5 to step 4 or step 3, depending on what is, what is going on. We also plan to continue with our data dashboard, which is on our website, and updating that most likely weekly with the number of COVID cases in, in our district that have been reported to us so that families still know how many cases we have.
Do you...
Yes.
Did you have any indication, or was there any way to glean from any of the survey stuff? What percentage of parents intend to get their kids vaccinated?
We didn't ask. We had some questions or some comments that said families would feel better about their kids coming back to school when their children are vaccinated.
I saw that, yep.
That was some of them, but we did not, we did not ask in order to give you a number on that.
And are we thinking about, is there a possibility of us doing another clinic out here for students?
Yes, you will get that update in the school status report in our regular session, correct?
Thank you.
Another theme we saw was the quarantine response. So what will our response be for quarantine? So we are thinking of moving our, the length of our quarantine. So for this whole school year, we have followed the gold standard of 14 days. We know that we had different options, so we could go down to 10 days without a test or seven days with a negative COVID test at day six. We have chosen for this school year to stick with the 14-day quarantine period. But I believe next year, we are going to look at shortening that and so students won't be out of school as long as they would have with the 14-day. And kind of tied into that is, you know, if a student is sick, what is our, our sick day response? And really, when we think of our kids who are sick, they should be home resting. We don't want to, for them to really learn, "When you're sick, you have to keep pushing through and attend school." You know, we have never had an option for students to attend virtually when they are sick, when it's not related to COVID. And I would say our teachers are really great about responding to students when they miss a day and getting them caught up. So I, that, those are kind of what we are thinking for next year in response to some of the questions that we received in the survey.
Another question that came up, and this was more through conversations with teachers through building leadership teams, was what's the timeline for making a decision about virtual options? And so some considerations would be families need to make plans and perhaps explore options. And if they want to enroll in WEVA, the sooner they can enroll, the sooner they can complete the paperwork, finish the whole process, and be ready to start school on time in the fall. We heard from families this year that since we were making our decision into August, because we were waiting for public health guidance into August, some families that wanted to transfer to WEVA couldn't get enrolled to be ready to start at the beginning of the school year. Schools also need to create master schedules and complete placement. And so the sooner we can know what our options will look like for next year, it can really facilitate principals and teacher leaders making those schedules and plans for next year. And if any planning revolves around hiring, we'd want to hire and attract candidates sooner rather than later so that we could have people onboard and ready to go and get professional development over the summer as needed. So the sooner the board can make a decision about any in-house virtual option and communicate that decision to families, really the easier planning will be for schools, families, and students for next year. Now that said, you know, what's the timeline? It depends on the board, but the sooner that decision can be made, it will help out a bit.
In terms of the numbers you have available now, do you have any sort of a feel or recommendation as to what may be a minimum number of virtual learners would be? Would there be a break-off point where it just becomes counterproductive in terms of cost and time spent and that sort of thing?
We don't have a number, but as we keep going through the slides, we'll talk about kind of how our planning has evolved and what families are hoping for and then what we can provide at the numbers we have currently.
Okay.
So we'll get into that answer in a bit. Are there other questions about the survey before we take a look at some planning considerations?
Well, I appreciate that you took the time with the survey to, making sure I'm mic'd properly here. Thank you for taking the time and I appreciate you recognizing some differences in demographics. I mean, I think we know from the data about both the effects of COVID and vaccinations, how different demographics are addressing or, or, or are being affected by it. So I appreciate that. So the fact that there are a number of demographics that are underrepresented, I think we do need to take into account when we have the discussion that we consider, you know, some of our more vulnerable students and families and so on, that it's not necessarily just numbers. It's also the, the consequences of not doing some things as well. I'm not directing that at you, but I wanted to recognize that you, I appreciate you doing that. Some more towards the fuller board.
Yeah. And as we look at, you know, and that's in the packet, kind of, it's on page 3 since page 2 was blank there. If we look at the demographics of students who are currently attending virtual, virtually, in many of the subcategories, when we break it out by race, the population attending virtually and the full district enrollment are pretty similar. The one exception is our students who are Asian or of Asian descent. And that population is overrepresented in our virtual population. So 7%, 7.7% of our virtual kids identify as Asian and 3.6% of our total population identify as Asian. But for the other ethnicities, it's a pretty good match. So 1.5% of our district are students who are black and 1.5% of our virtual kids are students who are black. So we don't have, other than that Asian subgroup, we don't have kind of a skewed population attending virtually compared to our overall student population. But then in our survey responses, that's where there's some, you know, more underrepresented groups in the survey responses. I would say our Asian population was a bit underrepresented in survey responses. Our students who are black were underrepresented a bit in survey responses. But the others, you know, Hispanic was slightly underrepresented. I would have to run a test to see if it was statistically underrepresented. But the others were, were kind of close to what our demographics are in terms of survey responses. Any other survey questions before we look at planning considerations?
I just want to clarify. So this survey did go out to anyone who could be enrolled in this district. So all the people that transferred to WEVA got the survey twice, okay?
Yes. As well as our building administrative assistants, particularly at K-5, have kept a list of those families who are below compulsory age or doing homeschool. And we sent it to those families as well. So they are technically not in the district, but we sent the survey to them. There were certainly families that were missed because if they're not in our infinite campus system, we could have missed them, they weren't on a list somewhere. And so in the email, we encouraged families to share it with others. And we know through Facebook and other ways that there were some families we missed, but they were able to fill out the survey because it was shared. Okay.
And I think it's not that they were missed, they're not connected and hadn't been connected to our school district.
Right. So let's keep looking at some kind of planning considerations for what families were telling us in survey responses that they would like and then what it would take to meet the needs that they've identified. Starting with K-5, and we split it by K-5 and 612 because the models would look different because of the developmental needs of students at those grades. So if you base it on just the number of survey responses for K-5, there were 24 students who were looking for an in-house virtual option. With 24 students, if we think about a regular class size at K-5, that would be about one teacher. Now if we think, okay, that's kind of on a low end because we only heard from 40% of the families, let's say it doubles, or even triples and we're up to, you know, maybe three teachers total for K-5 on a very high end. In those projections I gave you, you know, a high-end projection for K-5 would be 77 students. So 77 students, hmm, maybe that's four teachers, maybe it's three teachers, it's somewhere in that range. Families really indicated that what they were looking for in an in-house virtual option was a connection to the McFarland curriculum, a connection to their friends in McFarland and a connection to the McFarland teachers. That connection to McFarland curriculum is really the trickiest part to provide with the number of responses that we have, even with that high-end projection. Because for a teacher to teach reading, writing, math, phonics at the younger grades and to do it for multiple grade levels, that's a challenge that, it would be very hard to meet that. Particularly, families of younger students are saying, "We need a lot of live instruction. It's really hard for me as a parent to be the one doing the teaching. It's really helpful when the teacher can do the teaching." So if we're not able to hire six elementary teachers, one per grade, it would be a challenge for, you know, me to teach kindergarten and first grade in four or five different subjects live to two different grade levels. So what would that mean? What are we hearing from other schools around the area? How could this be done? Well, what some other schools are looking at is using the Wisconsin eSchool Network, which is packaged curriculum. That is not the same as what's happening in their classrooms, but it's purchasing through vendors, getting a math curriculum through a vendor, getting an ELA curriculum through the vendor, and then having the local teacher be a learning coach for those students. It wouldn't meet the needs that families are identifying in the survey to be connected to the McFarland curriculum. It would meet the need that it would be a McFarland teacher, but it wouldn't be Bridges Math Curriculum and Units of Study Reading and Writing. So to meet that need of McFarland curriculum, it would take six teachers. But even at the high-end estimates that we have, we kind of have the budget there for three or four teachers. And then it becomes the question for the board, are we going to reallocate class sizes? Are we going to take one of our teachers and have that one or two or three or four, you know, some of our teachers, make them the virtual teacher, which would increase the class sizes in the other sections? And have them be the virtual teacher? And then as students perhaps change their mind throughout the year and go from virtual to in-person, which is the trend we saw here third and fourth quarter, would we reallocate the classes again and change homerooms to, to make those staffing changes? Or would we stick with it? The other option would be, are we dipping into one-time funds for the teachers, which is what we did this school year? And then allocating those funds for six additional educators to meet the needs for, you know, the 77 students who are asking for that option? Those would be things that have come across as we've been planning and thinking ahead of, what are the options and what could we do? Another option or things that we've been thinking about through planning and asking for feedback from teachers is concurrent options. So concurrent is when the teacher is teaching virtual students and in-person students at the same time. Our K-5 teachers, the feedback and administrators as well, recognize that concurrent teaching at K-5 is challenging for students, families, and staff. Our families through the survey are indicating that it's really hard if they're at WEVA to be the, their learning coach. A young student needs someone beside them to help redirect them, to teach them. Our teachers, when they've had, you know, a classroom shifted to virtual for a few weeks because of an exposure, they're indicating they're teaching their kids and all of a sudden, the kid is gone. The kid has run away from the computer, they, and they can't teach the kid when they're not on the other end of the computer. It's, it's really, you know, not appropriate for a young student to be doing that. Also, with the model that we're looking at next year, it's a full day, 7:45 to 2:45 schedule. So the student on the other end of the computer would be zooming in from 7:45 to 2:45. Our older students are seeing Zoom fatigue set in on the shortened schedule this year from like 9:00 to 12:30. If we're thinking of pacing that out for a full day schedule and just having students zoom in for that time, it would be a challenge for those students, families, and teachers. And the teachers, you know, the families are saying, what do they want from an in-house virtual? They want connections with other kids. Based on the number of kids that we have, they may be one of the only kids zooming into that classroom. So what's the social-emotional impact of that? What's the opportunities to collaborate with other children in that format? It would be there, but it wouldn't be as robust as what our current virtual in-house option is this year. What I think Cory Shefcek has called our current in-house virtual, "The Cadillac Model." It is really very robust. It's having that one teacher for every grade level, virtual-only sections. And that's something, you know, it would take six teachers to be able to do that. Now, what are other options? So we've talked about, you know, what would it look like hiring a teacher per grade? What would it look like concurrent? Another option would be working in a targeted fashion for families for individual situations. Targeted solutions could include students who have IEPs. An IEP team could meet and they could determine what is best for that individual student. And to be very clear for teachers who may be listening, that could include concurrent teaching. So there may be students with IEPs that the IEP team meets and determines that the best thing for that individual child could be a portion of the day, learning concurrently. Meeting that need would be different for targeted solutions than it would be to have a whole system built around it. If we were building a system around concurrent teaching, we would likely cluster the kids into one classroom. That would have effects on how the placements are done for all of the classes in the grade level. As students are shifting back and forth, it might have impacts on the class sizes as we go. If we're doing something in a targeted way, it's a different sort of response. It will still be a challenge, it will still be challenging on both ends of the computer. But it would be different on the system to have targeted responses than having that option available for all. We could also connect students with alternative online options. Throughout the state of Wisconsin, there are 52 virtual charter schools that have options available for families. And we could look into those options and see what is the best learning environment for each child and help families connect with options that are available. And WEVA would also remain an option for all families in the district. We have considerations for 612 as well. Are there any questions or comments about K-5 options and the considerations that we've been thinking about with our survey results?
It's, it seems to me, just anecdotally, that the word from the very beginning has been that, that K through 2 kids can't learn virtually. Or it's, it's a very difficult proposition, you know, for kids that young to learn virtually. And to my recollection, that was the reason that, you know, we did K-2 the way that we did. We, you know, we put them back in, in person. Has that changed? Or are we just addressing this based on requests from families?
Addressing it based on requests from families. And it's also been, it's been, we made the decision about K-2 in September because we were starting back in-person at K-2 in September.
Right. Right.
Then in December and January, the board directed us to have an in-house virtual option three twelve. So now as we're planning for next year, we really want to try to plan as a system as much as possible so that the options are similar for families who have children in different buildings across the district. But it has not changed that virtual learning is a challenge for K two students. Um, their independence isn't there. Um, their ability to independently locate the materials, to find where they are on a page. Um, they're learning handwriting, they're learning pen grip. They're learning things that are, that really takes someone sitting beside them and being that learning coach.
Sure.
And that's what we're hearing from families who are at WEVA. It's taking a great deal of support from the parent at home, and it wouldn't be any different for a virtual in-house option for students that are that age.
Well, I, I do wonder if there's, I mean, we, we kind of have taken the model that has been going on this year and, and placed it in the next year. Like you said, maybe the Cadillac version. What about shaking up the ideas a little bit and, and, and thinking about half-days, for example, not having them sit nine to two or whatever it is, but for K, and, and I'm not even sure, three-five, I, I, you know, I'm still kind of mixed on K two versus three-five and even trying to blend those two, but let's just, for my argument, pretend we take three-five, um, and have just the morning or just the afternoon, um, and get rid of some of the, the barriers that you're saying by doing that. Um, you know, having a teacher, and I don't even think, I don't know if a teacher could do both. That's not what I'm suggesting. Um, but I, I, I just, I feel like we, I don't, I think we're kind of stuck in a functional fixedness kind of way, like we're just replacing with what we're doing now, then, and instead saying, you know, what have we learned from doing this? And how can we do it differently and better? And the reason why I'm saying that is I just, I still feel like there, I think we can give a lot of reasons why it's not possible, but I think we need to be thinking about what we can do and make it possible if the numbers do come out to be about thirty-five or thirty, you know, thirty-something at each of the schools. Like, how do we, how do we recognize that for people who can't be vaccinated, who have underlying conditions, like how are we going to provide education knowing that WEVA is not an option for a lot of them because they can't be home the whole time? So we can't default to WEVA. I think we just learned so much. I want us to be a little, not saying that we're not open-minded, but, you know, thinking outside the box, I guess.
I guess though, if you look at the numbers on the responses, um, I understand that not everyone responded, but I kind of feel like we have to make a decision based on the responses that we got.
Correct.
Um, if you look at the people who are considering an in-house virtual option, K through five, I mean, it's ten, fourteen, twenty, twenty-four for K through five that are going to be in-house virtual. And then we've got four who are undecided.
But if the, the question was not, what are you going to do? It was like, what would you like to do, what do you want us to consider, so?
I'm just saying, we'd also need to keep in mind, you know, breakout rooms and things like that. And if they're going to get the same experience with two or three kids per grade level, say, you know, working in that virtual fashion. Because I think that hinders them too, not to have that collaboration part, so.
Yeah. I think, but we do have to be careful with the survey data that if, since we're still, we don't know what sixty percent will do. And I, I really appreciate the extrapolation because it gives us kind of an idea whether or not it's accurate or not. We still need, just because they didn't tell us not what they wanted to do, we still need to plan for what they want to do. So we're still dealing with sixty percent of people. And that could, I mean, if we were to ask the survey differently, like, what are you going to do? And everyone must respond, then we can plan for it. Now, we're still extrapolating and projecting, it's hypothetical, really.
Other districts going through this whole thing too? And what have you found out out there and same way?
Well, most Dane County districts, uh, because most of the districts outside of Dane County are, they're debating right now whether or not they're going to have masks for the remainder of the school year. Dane County Public Health put Dane County districts into a different process to migrate through. Um, each of the districts are going through this. The last, uh, call I was on was, uh, last, uh, Friday. Uh, our, our interim, uh, starting July one, uh, Wayne was here and joined me with that. Um, they're going through more of the same discussions. Uh, the common theme that I'm hearing is plan for a virtual option only if this amount of students are available to do it. And not our numbers, but a certain quantifiable number. Some districts are using, if we were to have a full class section and more, and it did not need other resources other than a teacher, it's possibly a consideration. I'm only aware of one district in Dane County that is really planning for a in-house virtual. But again, they are indicating that, not an in-house virtual, but a virtual option. And those virtual options are leaning towards what Melissa described as more of the packaged, um, curriculums. Um, they're not necessarily a McFarland staff member. Um, they are another version of a, a virtual school, such as WEVA, or the other fifty-plus, uh, virtual schools that families do have access to if they use the open enrollment alternative. So we're in no different, uh, planning model. And what we're seeing at, uh, our closest of neighbors surrounding us is they are also seeing very much a lack of interest in being able to fill even a, a full section. And we're one of the smallest districts in Dane County outside of Wisconsin Heights and Deerfield. Um, so these other schools, um, when we talk, a couple of things, I've kind of picked up on some comments here. One thing I, I really want to go back to is a comment you made, and maybe I just misinterpreted it, was, um, you know, parents saying that, you know, WEVA is a challenge because they have to be there all day long with their child. You meant like, we don't want children to be left at home alone. And I don't think that's what you meant to, you know.
Wait, can you say that again?
You mentioned about how the intensity of like a WEVA or anything else is that it, it is. It, it's, most virtual schools are that a parent has to be a learning coach the whole time.
Right.
I, I think your comment, I just want to make sure, clarify, you didn't mean, you know, hey, parents can go off to work because they're now gonna not have to be able to work.
No.
But rather, it is an intense, it's an intensity, it's an intensity when kids are in person, um, to keep them focused in that. Um, so I just wanted to re-clarify that piece. When we talk about, um, and I wanted to get back to the comment, um, you know, our parents wanting a McFarland teacher. Similar to other school districts, um, first of all, you have to have staff that want to do concurrent or a virtual. We had a lot of great teachers that stepped up to the situation of doing that this year. Their expertise, their training, um, while they're willing to do it and, you know, are going to take a lot of some of those best practices, our staff overwhelmingly want to be teaching students in person. Similar to other school districts, if we have a virtual option, if we were to walk out of here with wanting a virtual option for each grade level of someone that's a McFarland teacher, it is likely that we would be, A, needing to post, hopefully finding a staff member that is qualified, and C, we'd have to take the summer to try and train them in a curriculum if it were to have to be the McFarland curriculum. So we're just shy of a hundred days away from next school year. So that, I want to put that in the back of people's mind. We're not the only school district struggling with the idea that when we go to hire staff, it's not a pool of two, three, four hundred stu-, or teachers. It's a pool of maybe forty-five teachers, of which maybe a third are qualified, and then you have to fit, you know. So, um, I think we're kind of already, we've jumped past a couple of comments of this slide into the next slide, but, um, I hope I answered, uh, your question, Arlen.
Yeah.
Plus a few.
Very good. Just for clarification, I know you mentioned that there are other districts that are, you know, fighting over whether to wear masks or not the rest of this year. My understanding is that, you know, even with the CDC announcement last week, part of it was that masks are still optimal in schools. They're not, they, they didn't mean to say that.
And Public Health Medicine Dane County has not taken away.
Oh, no, no, I understand, but I'm just saying.
Counties around us have.
Yeah, people, people, I think, are hanging their hat on that CDC announcement that was, that came out last Friday, and then that's going to be gospel from here on forward. And I just don't think that's necessarily true. I think CDC recognizes that, uh, masks should still be worn in schools.
When you talk about sessions, when you were talking about other schools and trying to determine if they have a full session, what kind of volume are you talking about?
So, for instance, a, a grade level of first grade and having a class size of twenty-six kids.
Okay.
Um, what they're trying to do is look at, can we reallocate a person that's part of the organization to do such work?
If we get that many students.
That, that's the interpretation of what other school districts are looking at doing.
Right.
Which, that does make sense. That doesn't mean that you're swapping one, one, one-for-one costs because we'd certainly need to look at the curriculum costs, uh, the technology costs. I mean, so there, there's a lot of additional that goes on top. But minimally, you know, most districts are kind of like, well, if we do get into this situation, and vice versa, if, uh, there was a need to go back virtual, for a lot of people, what are, you know, the setup for that in the reverse metrics, so.
That's your right, the school size dictates, uh, you, the, the percentage in a larger school will fill a classroom quicker than a percentage in a smaller school for us having a class of equitable size to, to fund, basically.
But we are seeing our, more of our neighboring comparable districts that are, uh, more demographically similar, um, financially similar. They're almost double our size, some of those districts.
Yes, right.
And, you know, basically are between, uh, fifteen-hundred in the Wisconsin Heights area, Deerfield area. We're in twenty-five-hundred, and then it basically starts to jump to three, four thousand, five thousand, uh, seven thousand, and then you start hitting Sun Prairie about ten thousand, uh, and then Madison, twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand. So our other more comparables that are in Dane County that are less than that Sun Prairie are not filling, uh, data right now to even think that they should probably be having virtual classes per grade level of an in-house, um, piece. So that's, we are experiencing the same thing that our counterparts are.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So for this being a working session, are we, my understanding was we were getting information and then, and that's it, right? We're not making any decisions tonight? There's no, I noticed there's no motions coming to the board about this.
You have a, um, option for a motion this evening, but we were going to discuss what our recommendation would be administratively, and then the board has the ability for, uh, action item. If the board moved out of this working session with wanting to, I'm getting to, that is item. Ten F, there is discussion and possible action on twenty-one, twenty-two McFarland's school year planning. It's a very vague topic, but could incorporate this work session.
Okay. So just staying with K five, because I think K five is still, to me, a really unique situation. Um, because I think part of what people, or parents, I should say, are thinking is because of the lack of vaccination. So, you know, six, if you, if you consider that twelve-year-olds are able to get vaccinated, if not already, but soon, soon, or they already are, they already, okay. So we're, we're dealing with, um, a number of younger kids who can't yet. And I'm guessing that's the primary reason, um, why, why people would like to do this. Or people who can't be vaccinated, which would, which also makes sense. So I think, to me, I, I think I'm also weighing the idea that, um, you know, what is the responsibility for us to deal with that when that's true? That we know that we're either putting, once again, putting people at risk or in a, in a situation that maybe isn't the best thing educationally? Like, what obligation do we have to address that? That, that often raises for me, what is our moral obligation for that? But the second thing that I think about, even when we think about costs, is if we're talking, you know, thirty kids or whatever the range is, we can even go somewhere in the middle, say twenty, what is the cost of the time in trying to figure out how to make twenty kids fit in the dis-, the K five system? If we don't have teachers who are willing to do it? I mean, there's still some time with, with the, you know, meeting with staff and meeting with parents and trying to get their educational needs matched. It's basically doing almost like an IEP for twenty extra kids, right? And dealing and addressing it with teachers and so on. So there, to me, there's also that trade-off, like, you know, how do we, how do we put that cost as part of it as well? So I just, I'm just throwing that out there, considerations, because once again, K five feels the most challenging to me. Six twelve seems a, in my mind, a little easier, but maybe you guys would disagree with that, maybe. Well, we'll hear.
Well, we should probably.
Well, and I think the, there's the time that it would take to meet with twenty families to talk about individualized options and try to provide supports. And there's the time that it would take to create an in-house virtual option. So the time it would take to hire the teachers, and it would be hiring teachers. Um, we asked the building leadership teams if any of them or if they anticipated any of their colleagues being interested in having the virtual-only job for next year. And none of the teachers said that they knew of anyone working in our schools currently who would like to be the virtual teacher for next year. Um, so it would be hiring someone externally. And that was particularly true with the option of having a virtual teacher be responsible for two grade levels. Um, the, you know, so if we are not able to hire six teachers, one per grade, and we're saying, okay, you're going to teach third grade in the morning and fourth grade in the afternoon, or you're going to teach all of them all day, but they're going to be mixed, and you'll kind of set the third graders at this task and the fourth graders at that task. The teachers said, you know, I, I would like to teach in person. That's what I'd like to do for next year. So we would be, we would have the, the time cost of hiring the teachers, inducting the teachers, and getting them set up in the McFarland systems. Um, and then that virtual option would be a time commitment administratively and for the teachers throughout the school year or throughout the semester, as opposed to the initial push of helping families find appropriate supports to start the year off. And then that would fall off once the school year began and teacher, and families were placed. Um, and then we, we would have the, you know, hopefully they would decide at some point to come back to us in person. And then we would have that transitional, you know, administrative piece. But we have students moving into the district all the time where we have that. Um, K five, virtual learning, it's again, the independence of the learners and the amount of support that they need. Any virtual option is going to be, they're going to need a learning coach at home to support them, no matter what that system looks like. Um, whether it's what other districts are looking at with Wisconsin e-school, and it's kind of a teacher-coach, but then that packaged curriculum, or, or whatever it is. I mean, I would say even at WABSA this year, our virtual teachers are doing what they can to support from school, but it's taking that partnership at home of having, you know, for a third grader is, it's a third grader, eight, nine years old, and the independence of them to be able to manage their resources, manage their time, it takes somebody at home to help with that piece. And that's really hard for two working parents, even in this Cadillac version that we have going on now.
Um, oh, no, I, I'll ask you again later if it's another draft. Go ahead.
Should we talk about six-twelve considerations? At six-twelve, there is the unique piece that, you know, twelve-year-olds and up are eligible for vaccinations. It doesn't mean that every twelve-year-old can get vaccinated for a variety of reasons, but they are eligible for vaccinations. Um, if we look at just the survey responses, and Kate was doing that quick math earlier, there are six at the sixth through eighth grade level and eighteen at the high school level who indicated a, a desire for an in-house virtual option. With those numbers, um, it's not enough to have virtual-only sections. So we would. So, we wouldn't have enough students to say, okay, at sixth grade, there's a virtual-only session, and then the other sections were in-person sections. So, it would either be hiring teachers. Hiring teachers isn't even really on here, because with licensing needs and the specializations of content areas, we'd be hiring a math teacher, a social studies teacher, a science teacher, an English teacher. So, haggling and having that separate person there really isn't an option. It would be looking like concurrent teaching. Several of you were at the Berserk Meeting last week, the Professional Staff Employee Relations Committee, where they were able to share their feedback on what concurrent teaching has looked like this year. And it has been challenging for students, for families, and for teachers. Through the survey results, you know, I think they are probably isolated instances, but families had mentioned audio problems where a teacher would, you know, walk away from the computer to go help someone in person, but forget to walk back to the computer when they started talking to the class again, so the audio is challenging. Teachers are reporting challenges engaging the two audiences at once, and how do you have, you know, families are saying, what's important to you? We want engagement, we want collaboration and communication. It's challenging right now where we have sometimes half to a third of the class virtual. With the numbers that we're looking at, and even those high-end projections for next year, there could be situations where there are one or two virtual kids zooming into a class. What is the social-emotional impact for that, for the isolation, or feeling, you know, how, how does that work next year when it's even fewer students? As we've seen the number of in-house virtual students drop throughout third and fourth quarter, you know, we could project if more students are able to get vaccinated, would those virtual numbers drop to what we're seeing in the survey and lower? Also, currently in our model, we have Wednesdays as an opportunity for teachers to reach out to the virtual kids. Next year, we won't have Wednesdays as an opportunity for families, for teachers to reach out and for virtual kids to get those additional supports. So, it'll be even more challenging to support and make sure that our virtual kids at home are getting what they need. The schedule, again, would be an all-day schedule. So, students would be zooming in from eight to three, kind of roughly, at our middle and high school. And we have students facing Zoom fatigue now, when they're zooming for three hours a day. It would be, it would be a challenge to maintain a full schedule where you are, you know, spying into the classroom via video from home. And I think I mentioned that. The other option, so if concurrent, you know, is, is challenging for all participants, and particularly those supports that would be lost on Wednesdays, we could work on targeted supports that would look similar to what we discussed for K5, looking at WEVA as an option. We've always had students at the high school who have mixed schedules. Maybe they have work experience, and so they have a class or two that is through Odysseyware or other kind of online options. So, there could be families or students who are saying, you know, for work experience opportunities, I need to have this schedule, so what can I do at school? School could work with them to create a schedule that would be outside of having this full-on system available for an in-house virtual option. And that would continue, that would continue going back and forth from WEVA. We have resident students who attend WEVA, but they take band classes at the middle school. That's something that happens each year anyway, that could continue.
I've got a, a quick question regarding the learning coach and the expectations that go along with it. Do we lay out expectations for the in-house virtual model like they do for WEVA? Where, you know, right from the get-go, this is going to require three to five hours per day, learning coach, you know, sitting next to the student? Did we lay out those same, or any expectations of the parents or learning coaches for our in-house virtual option? Does that demand the same kind of, you know, time commitment that, say, a WEVA would?
This year, all of our students started as virtual learners for that first day of school, and we did not lay out with families, you know, we're expecting this and we're doing that.
Mm-hmm.
And the virtual option way back in step three, which is where we were for most of the year at grades third and up, we designed that to be a half-day schedule, an AM, PM model where they were learning synchronously only half of the day. And part of that was so that we could have a seamless transition to our hybrid, which was also that half-day model.
Mm-hmm.
Part of that was because of the Zoom fatigue, and part of that was because of the amount of parent support that it would require, that live synchronous learning would only be in half of the day, so hopefully, someone at home would be able to flex the schedule and make that work.
Right.
But there were trade-offs for that. In that model that we had for most of the year at grades three through 12, with, it was only half of a day, there was half of the time.
Right.
In terms of meeting the regular curriculum, grade-level standards that we typically hit, there's only so much, even the best teachers, which we have some of the best teachers here, and they did amazing things, there's only so much you can do with half of the time.
Mm-hmm.
And the other half was asynchronous expectations, which were mixed. You know, there were some families that were really getting after the asynchronous expectations. I know at Wabesa, they had assemblies focused on the asynchronous expectations and really trying to encourage students to do those things.
Mm-hmm.
And it was still mixed of what was able to get done. So, if we have a virtual model that's a half a day to kind of accommodate the screen time and all of that, it limits how much teaching and learning can happen. It's not, it, it's just different.
And the, the only other, I've got an observation rather than a, a question, but I did attend a, a class at Indian Mound, and the teacher was teaching concurrently. And just, just based on watching the teacher, the mechanics of teaching in person are different than the mechanics of teaching virtually. And, you know, the, the, you could tell that this particular teacher wasn't one just to stand up front, you know, and kind of do, do the instruction from there. This was a, this was an instructor that got out amongst, you know, the kids in the class and would lean on the desk and help individual kids. Well, that kind of left the virtual kids in a vacuum of sorts. So, I can, I can see, just based on the mechanics of teaching, that it would be extremely difficult to teach concurrently.
And I think if concurrent teaching were to continue, there'd be technology needs. So, the teachers would need a portable microphone to make sure that the audio was there. And then there is still, you know, the mechanics, there's the physical mechanics, but there's also the, you know, the engagement and the feedback that go along with it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you would have to be managing, you know, getting the breakout rooms set up here, now making sure the table groups are going there. Our teachers are doing it now. So, to say it's completely impossible isn't true, but to say that it has taken a toll and is incredibly challenging is also true. Jeff, do you want to talk about our next slide?
Sure. So, resource considerations, certainly I kind of mentioned a few of these a couple of slides ago. And, you know, we've heard a couple of board members say, you know, a work session, yes, we're providing you a lot of information, and, you know, feel free to ask us more questions. And then there is even a chance later in the meeting, if there even wants to be discussion again about this topic. So, just feel free that we do have a busy evening if we need to come back. But, you know, regardless of, you know, our, our numbers right now, even if we were to try and extrapolate and seek out a, a higher number, all staffing levels are going to be needed next year for those that want in-person. And so, whether we're swapping our own staff to teach in a virtual world or hire new, we're going to have to have a, we'll have a financial consideration there. With that, again, I mentioned earlier, there are limited pools, particularly once you get past the licensure of our K through six levels. The number of individuals licensed for English, math, science, social studies becomes much more limited. And then when you get to even more of the electives, it's even more challenging. So, similar to other Dane County districts, we would have the same challenge of trying to, in a normal year, we're competing with our neighbors just to get great teachers. If all districts in Dane County are trying to compete for some extra virtual options and not go down a path of potentially a targeted way, we, we would need to know if, if we're going to have to go for that challenge more so. Or also, we've become a little bit more limited on the fact that if we do have more in-house virtual options, we're going to have to do a lot more dedicated training, so we're successful, and we're, and then we're also setting families up for success. We have a limited number of shopping days in June, July, and August to get ready for, if we were to delay too long our discussions about what direction should we be headed? Should we be headed in more of a targeted way or a all-encompassing plan, depending on the level? Financing. Similar to pretty much every year, we're always looking at, starting with a structural deficit. The budgetary resources that we are allocated from the state typically always put us in a position where we have to make trade-offs as we develop our budgets. Any of this conversation will have to come out of another resource, likely, fund balance.
Can you explain what fund balance is?
So, those are our reserves.
Great.
So, that would be our, our family's reserves for the rainy day. We are at a point this year that we will be using some rainy day funds for the conclusion of the 2021 year. There is no indication that we're going to receive additional funding for ESSER funds more than what we've really been receiving as it is right now. I mean, only one point, of our 1.5 million COVID spending this year, we're getting reimbursed about 15%. So.
Is that across the board?
No, the McFarland School Districts, ESSER 1, 2, and 3, which, ESSER number 3, which is the largest package that's coming forward, is still debate, being debated right now at Joint Finance. There is a good potential that all of ESSER 3 monies end up part of supplanting of state funds for a year or two and using some federal funds so that the state can look like they have great finances. But that's at the hands of the Joint Finance Committee right now. ESSER 1 funding was based on Title I funding. We received about $43,000, uh, $47,000. That was wiped out easily by our 1.5 million we've been spending this year. The current $187,000 of ESSER 2 funding, again, is being wiped out by our 1.5 million in COVID spending this year. At a minimum, if we were looking at just even a staff member, this isn't including additional administration, new technology, assistant, assistance helping with a virtual option or summer training, just a staff member at each grade level is $1.1 million. So, from a financial standpoint, it likely, from a, the finance side, the term targeted is probably a much more efficient from a financial standpoint and less of an impact on the overall budget. Do I have a number for that? I don't have a number for that, but it would be less than 1.1 million.
Jeff, how do, how do, like, we have funds that, do that make sense? Do we get anything from these guys? I mean, they, they almost.
Yeah, there are 3,500 students this year. Uh, the previous, normal years, there are about 2,200 students. I'm guessing that that will shift. We used to rely entirely on the WEVA oversight funds as part of our budget, and in this last year, two years, we have not had to rely on all of those oversight fees. So, structurally, we've been able to actually build some rainy day funds. However, as I mentioned about the normal budget process, we're likely to need to tap back into our, our virtual WEVA oversight fees.
But we'll get more, which replaces our rainy day funds.
Because we continue for another year. So, we could tap into those funds to do some of, maybe it's not even one or the other, it's somewhere in the middle. Right? Is that possible?
Well, we certainly can look at how we develop our budget and which resources we want to use, that is for sure.
Okay, because it would be a temporary year thing, basically.
It, it could be.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Have we looked at long-term goal as far as, I mean, I know we're discussing right now, but is there a plan to continue this? When we're, if we're talking about sending more money to make it more robust, is there a plan to continue this outside of this next year, or have you guys discussed that at all?
This conversation certainly is about the 21, 22 year.
I know. But you're putting resources in, right, that are resources that, I mean, you're, you're essentially training somebody to do this. So, that was my question was, I realize right now we're talking about next school year, but like, at what point then? Because this could go on and on and on, you know what I mean? Like, COVID, COVID's not going to go away. So, yes, right now, we're talking about this, but there's going to be families who might not feel safe in 12 months coming back too. So, I guess my question is, what is, have we discussed any kind of a long-term goal if we did decide to invest in more resources for a virtual learning program? Or is it just, we're getting through next school year, and then the plan is probably to stop it?
Well, I, I think our current planning is looking at 21, 22, then jump into as, as the model we end up picking allows us to migrate, you know, to the next year. Whether or not we're going to be investing, I mean, certainly, one of the things that always comes to my mind is the fact that if we do go, you know, an additional staff member for every grade level, I can tell you that when we hire a one-year person, those are really difficult conversations for our principals when they find that they have this great employee and they have to tell them, we don't need you next year. So, that is certainly one of those, when we talk about the, the HR process of hiring, it's also the HR processing of letting go as well. And certainly, our financial models that the state has in place is basically based on the concept that you're going to have a certain number of kids per teacher, and that's how they built the revenue caps many years ago. So, when you start thinking about running a dual system, even if it's not 50/50, maybe it's 10%, you're always going to be having to look at, where will the resources come to financially make that commitment long-term? And that's where the word referendum comes into place in the future. That's one of those words that not a lot of people like hearing. There's one more slide, and again, there's an opportunity for further discussion and potentially, you know, conversation, even if there's action this evening later in the agenda. But, you know, from an administrative team perspective and our overwhelming consensus of our teachers, our administrators are 100% in on the idea of our best path forward is to maintain our focus on in-person instruction planning and not offer a full in-house virtual option 21, 22 for all. But rather, we feel that we do everything we can to help families find appropriate placement so that if they're not interested in the in-person or WEVA to fit their child due to this COVID-19 situation, we feel that the targeted practice would be our best. And it, it's difficult, there's going to be a lot of people that say, well, what's targeted? Well, there's a lot of definitions to it, and we would have to probably come back with more definition about that. But it would be more so of how we end up dealing with many of our students with IEPs, or many of our students that end up with 504 plans, or our situations of families that are going to be gone for a half-year for, you know, when the world was better to go around the world, and we'd have high school kids that would leave for a half-year and come back and finish up their studies. You know, we'd have staff trying to figure out how they can leave and come back and finish off their classwork as well. So, that, that's where the team is at. And that's, that's going to be frustrating for those that are thinking that, you know, we should be looking at everybody as if we're going to have the same, a same system for all. And. And we don't feel like that would be the best work of the McFarland School District. So like I said, later, there's another opportunity. You're still in a work session if you want to discuss more questions. Otherwise, I know that I'll be here and Melissa and Lauren will be in the rooms the other side, but they can certainly come back during that action item or discussion time.
Sure, that's mine.
That was a long 45-minute work session. By my accounts, we doubled it.
It could be much longer, so.
Right. I think it needs to be as long as it was.
Because it's a lot of information, it's a lot of things to think about.
We have more presentations this evening.
Yes, we do.
That I think are more so presentations than not.
Let's see.
Less interruptions.
So that concludes our work session. And next up, we have
Number four is Consent Agenda.
Yep, Consent Agenda items to include the minutes of the May 3, 2021 School Board Special Meetings, some general fund vouchers, and purchasing card transactions. We request approval of general voucher, general fund vouchers, 175599 through 175748, and numbers 291048 through 291099, and purchasing card transactions dated 3/21/21 through 4/20/21. We have professional staffing recommendations and co-curricular staffing recommendations. Let's see.
And 4E.
4E is Administrative Staffing Recommendations, Professional Staff Member Leave of Absence Request, and Personnel Items Not Necessary for Vote. So do we have a Student Council Report?
Wait, wait.
Need a motion for items 4.
The consent items.
Oh, for the, yes, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry. Administration recommends approval of the attached leave of absence request. Do I have a motion?
Well.
It's everything.
It's the Consent Agenda that contains items A through F.
Oh, I got you, I got you, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve all of the items from A to F.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And then number five?
Number five is Personnel Items, No Vote Necessary, and the Student Council Report. Do we have?
Are they still hanging in there with us?
Beloved Student Council, hey, there we go.
Yes, yes. Lizzie took most of what I was going to say. Other than that, really, we're just winding down to the end of the school year right now. We've got Senior Day this Friday, which I know we've talked about before, but looking forward to that. And then following that, we'll have graduation coming up soon. The exit interviews for those who opted into them are spread out throughout this week. Mine is on Wednesday, definitely looking forward to that. And that's really it for this, this year. Not too much else going on that we haven't already covered. I just, this will be the last board meeting, I think Lizzie and I get a chance to speak at. So I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity. It has been fantastic, and I hope you all do well past when I'm gone.
I agree, I think it was definitely eye-opening to really get to sit in on the board meetings and understand more of the background of all the decision-making because like from a student perspective, you just see the decisions are made and don't really understand how. So it was really exciting to see, actually.
Thank you very much, guys.
Wish you both.
Best of luck as you move on to whatever's next for you. And thank you for providing your perspective on all sorts of things that we really needed to hear this year. And I just really, I really appreciated how much we heard differing perspectives. Like one of you would say, well, I feel this way, and then I would say, well, I disagree. And that's what we need to hear, we need to hear the diversity, so thanks to both of you.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you very much. And good luck in the future. Be, be well and stay safe. Anybody else have anything? If not, we can move on. We have a high school report on class rank and weighted grades.
Is there a public comment?
Wait a minute, oh, yes, that's right, I'm sorry, I apologize. Next is public comments, and I believe we have one to be read, and we don't have any others. Yep.
Okay, so if you would like to make a public appearance by speaking to the board, please utilize the Q and A portion found at the bottom of your Zoom window. In the Q and A, we ask that you type your name, address, subject of interest, and whether you have discussed this item prior to the meeting with district staff or school board president. After submitting that information, I would transfer you over to speak to the board. And then if you would like to read the written comment while we're seeing if someone would like to speak in virtually?
Thanks very much, Angie.
Okay, I'm going to read the written comment. It's from Liz Reiser-Lober, 5060 Frost Astor Court, and it's regarding virtual at McFarland. "We are asking you to continue the McFarland Virtual Program. As previously mentioned, Weva is not an equitable comparison. Additionally, something that keeps continuity with the same teacher is best for the children, especially children with an IEP that struggle most with change. The McFarland schools are the entire reason why we are here. With kids aged 12 and over able to be vaccinated, it should not be long for kids 6 through 12. The anticipated date of emergency use release would be late fall, plus another six weeks for full immunity once the vaccination series is started. That would roughly be another semester into next school year. Virtual would not be a waste of resources if it is an implemented system to have for flu seasons or other childhood illness that takes kids out of school for extended periods of time. With all of the COVID variants, it seems likely to need booster shots in the future as well, where we'll likely never truly be done with COVID. It would not be surprising if there is another surge this summer or fall, especially as more families feel safe and head south where many states are hovering near 20% of the population fully vaccinated versus the 70% goal. Even if there is not another surge before this coming school year, which would likely force the hand of McFarland schools, is it fairer to take a wait-and-see approach when so many families left to virtual prior to the start of the year or left throughout the current year? Those that left to stay virtual did so for good reasons. Hearing the results of the survey should be interesting if they are shared. Waiting for children to be vaccinated is true more than ever with the CDC's recent announcement regarding masks. The U.S. is not, not great with the honor system. It should be interesting to see what happens following the plan that seems loosely thrown together, like much of the U.S. response to the pandemic has been. I have cut and pasted Caitlin Jettalina's comments. She writes, "As your local epidemiologist, and I could not articulate better myself with a lot of information she includes. Here are my initial thoughts. I don't think removing a mask requirement will improve vaccine hesitancy in the U.S., maybe a little, but nothing meaningful. I'm in the weeds with the community, wearing a mask doesn't even land in the top 20 reasons why people won't get a vaccine. This relies on an honor system which will crumble. This puts the, this puts the on us, on businesses to endorse and enforce, and this will make masks even more politicized. There are much smarter de-implementation strategies we could have gone with, like reaching the critical threshold of 59% and/or until every American has at least had the opportunity to get a vaccine or at least waited until transmission calmed down, so this virus stops mutating. There are only four states with moderate transmission, zero states with mild transmission. I wouldn't be surprised if we had another wave this summer. Someone should write a book about the implementation, de-implementation, and scientific communication downfalls of the U.S. during a global pandemic. I'll still be wearing my mask inside for my daughters, for my best friend who is immunocompromised, and until we can get this beast under control. And once we get there, I'll be the first to have a massive mask-burning bonfire. Maybe I'm being too careful, maybe I'm a sheep, but quite frankly, I don't care. Bottom line, it was too soon and this should be interesting."
Thank you, Kate. There were no other requests for comments, so we'll move on to the school board reports. The first is a high school report on class rank and weighted grades.
So Beth Cantfield and Jackie Gunther here from the high school to present this evening. Ask you to lean down in that corner.
Welcome, ladies. Thank you for coming.
Everybody knows Jackie and Beth from our high school People's Services Department.
So I'm Jackie Gunther, school counselor at the high school, I think finishing my 13th year. So good to see everyone, some new faces and some old faces. Especially good to see you, Bruce.
And then I'm Beth Cantfield, so I'm the other counselor at the high school. And this is my fourth year?
Fourth year, yep, yep, McFarland.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we do have a handout that we emailed, but we printed it if you want.
Sometimes it's just easier to have it right in front of you.
You're getting good, I'm getting first step, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we thought we'd keep the presentation pretty succinct, but then have some more details on that handout that has more information for you.
Thank you, boss.
Thank you.
All right.
Great.
So we are here tonight to just provide an update of some of the things that are happening at the high school in terms of our academic award system, class rank, and then weighted grades. So we just wanted to provide for you a history of ranking and weighting at MHS, and then our proposed revisions and kind of our thinking behind those. And we are actually here on behalf of the MHS Equity Action Team. So that is made up of 13 teachers and educational assistants, student services, and admin. Jackie and I really wanted to take this topic because it affects kind of our everyday role in student services. That's why we're here tonight, but we're representing all these folks on the equity team as well.
Absolutely, we just kind of are in the trenches of a lot of these conversations and kind of see the impact on our students. So we'll start by kind of talking about why did we have rank and weighted grades? So really, historically, it was used by colleges determined entrance, right? And that's when there weren't very many people going to college, and that's kind of where ranking, you know, you kind of wanted the more elite and, you know, less people were going. So that's kind of the background of that, and they used to kind of just have a formula. It'd be like GPA, class rank, ACT score, and then that pretty much said whether you would get in or not. Now, we've really totally changed our admissions process, which is great, it's much better for kids, but now we kind of need to update our systems to reflect that. So weighted grades, the history of that really was to provide an incentive for kids to try harder classes. So, you know, knowing that if they increase their GPA, they can possibly get a higher rank, so it would make them more likely to take these classes. However, you know, this grade bump really, it doesn't really change anything right now. I mean, the rank is pretty meaningless in the colleges' eyes, and it kind of really is just an unfair system, the way it is set up, so. For instance, one of the, I don't think we have it on this slide, but it talked about students that had like different schedules. And one student had like all AP classes and two study halls, and another student had, you know, a full schedule, did volunteer work, they did, you know, like an internship for credit. And then the one that had the study halls actually had the better rank, right? So it's like we're rewarding kids for sometimes not the right things, right? So we want to reward the kids that are more balanced and doing other things.
So one of the main reasons we need to rethink this, and Ms. Gunther, I'm talking to you like we're in front of us.
The students!
It's okay.
Seriously, our reasons.
Yeah. Is the changes in college admissions. So now is kind of the perfect time to start eliminating rank and weighted grades because so many schools across the U.S. have gone to pass/fail because of COVID. So we were really hoping to use that timeline to kind of move forward. Something that I also don't think a lot of students and family realize is Jackie and I calculate the unweighted GPAs and send them to colleges because they request those specifically. So that's something that we are doing already. And when it comes to holistic admissions, we are really seeing, and this is really wonderful to see, that admissions are looking at the whole student. So yes, grades still matter, things like that, but they want to know, what else have you been involved in? Tell us your story. They really take the essays a lot more than probably when you and I applied to college and it was just plugging in the numbers. And if you made the cut, great, and if you didn't, you weren't getting admitted.
I didn't have to write an essay. I don't know.
You were lucky, I guess.
Right?
When did they start changing that? I mean, when?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would argue, is it also something that's probably going at an accelerating rate, and partly it's because of COVID? Or is it just something that it's, was going to happen anyway?
Yeah, we've kind of seen, gosh, maybe the past five years or so, it's really gone to the holistic admissions process. I think we presented maybe a couple of years to the board about it, because we've been working with UW Madison and our families to really help students realize that school is important, your grades still matter, but that's not the whole story. And I know when we get to another point, I think Lizzie is going to talk about her experience with class rank and kind of what that's meant for her, so you can hear from her as well.
So one of the pieces that, having been here for 17 years, the exit interview process has been with this school district for seniors a lot longer. And that's actually one of the first items that districts started to implement because colleges were looking at the whole body of work versus your grade points. So to pinpoint when it started, McFarland actually started some of those best practices well, two decades ago at least. And that's one of the, one of the first onsets of when you started to see a lot of your area districts switching over.
And that was going to be my second question. And so when did those first schools start to, you know, drop using class rank?
So really like 10 years ago?
About 10 years ago?
Right, so and as we're looking at kind of all the research, we're finding it's very old.
Yeah.
You know, more like 2008, 2010, there's really not anything very recent, just because, again, we're kind of like a little bit later to the.
McFarland was actually quite far behind the curve, you know, when we really looked into the, the different grading.
And you can, you can see that's our next bullet point, so if you look on your handout. Jackie and I talked to all these districts in our area and realized that we are kind of last to go in terms of eliminating rank. The only other Dean County school that's still ranking is Sun Prairie. And talking with them, it seems like this is their next move as well.
Yeah, and I would say all our conversations with all the counselors has been a very positive change for their, for their whole school.
Has there been discussion here around pass/fail as opposed to the, to the letter grades and rank?
That's a great question, that hasn't come up in any conversations that I've been a part of.
Okay.
Go ahead, Angie. And I think this is the reason probably closest to our hearts as counselors is the social, emotional, and mental health of our students. Something that we realize, we have many students that come to us really upset about their rank, kind of feeling pitted against their classmates. As soon as grades come out every quarter, we have a line of students who come down who want to know, who want to know their rank, and our email just fills up. And it's just really disheartening to see, and I think that doesn't really fit with the whole mission that we're trying to do at the school and have a more collectivist culture as well.
Yeah, every year I would say at least one or two students are just like crying uncontrollably in my office. And I, I have to give them kind of the same speech, like the number is, like you don't have control over it. Like you can do everything just great and you just don't have control. So it's like, just to see that impact and all the anxiety it causes, it's really has been difficult. So I was really excited when we were going to make this change because I think it's going to be really good.
And is Lizzie, is Lizzie still on? She wanted to talk. Yeah, okay.
There she is. Hi, Liz.
Okay, um, yeah, this is definitely a topic that's been pretty near and dear to my heart for all of high school. I mean, I've struggled with, I guess, like you just said, I was once one of those kids who came into the guidance office freaking out because my class rank dropped. And I can definitely say I regret being that person, and I have many reasons why. So I'm just going to provide a bit of a student perspective. So first of all, I've talked to a lot of students, and the only students who really know or care about their class rank are those in the top 10, 20%-ish. And the only ones who like actually focus on it are a lot of times those top 10 because they're the only ones who are really recognized. Therefore, the maximum number of people who can like really be motivated by class rank or benefit from it is like maybe 20% of the grade. The rest just don't know and don't care. However, as a student who is, I've been in the top 10, I am in the top 10, I can firmly say that I don't believe the concept of class rank works out in person. Some background, I mean, I've taken a lot of AP classes. I've also taken a lot of tech ed courses. I've taken college classes, and I've done a youth apprenticeship. Three of those four things were not calculated into my weighted GPA. Only the AP classes like actually bumped up my GPA. And I can say that the AP classes I took were probably the least beneficial of all those things. So that is a big issue with like the weighted GPA system. Also, um, when you look at it, the top 10%, or the top 10 in each grade, a lot of us have over a 4.0. So when I say those other things, like the college classes, the youth apprenticeship and stuff, those technically, if you're in the top 10, can bring your GPA down, which is a really big problem. So in the school, AP classes are way higher than regular classes. And that's where I come back and say AP classes are not the be-all, end-all of high school courses. In fact, a lot of AP classes aren't even as hard as regular classes. I personally had a really hard time in like regular physics, which is a 4.0 on my GPA. But I didn't, like AP psychology, I thought was a much easier A to get than AP physics. So it's not, the weighted GPA is not a good representation of how hard the courses are in the first place. This can often cause students who I've like spoken to to shy away from like challenging non-AP courses and instead take less challenging AP courses that a lot of times they aren't really interested in. And I think that's a really big problem. Along with this, one of the best parts of McFarland Schools is our like course variety. The number of like marketing courses, business courses, there's so many tech ed courses, and there's so many resources in that area. We have really good foods courses, like all of those different kinds of classes are one of the things that make McFarland School so good. And there are students who are scared to take them because they don't have that AP class label, or they aren't, they don't have that grade bump. They don't have, they aren't an AP class. So I think that is a really bad thing that class rank has implemented in, or has caused like that attitude in our school because they aren't taking those really good classes. Also, college courses and youth apprenticeships are not well incorporated into the class rank calculation either. They're weighted really high. College courses are worth more credit, so it's weighted like really high in your GPA, but they aren't bumped up. So a lot of AP students really shouldn't be taking AP classes. They should be taking like an even higher level and using some of the resources we have with M A T C and UW Madison to take college classes that are even harder. And will prepare them more for college, but because they aren't bumped up, like they choose not to. Youth apprenticeships are the same, they're weighted really high. And I've directly spoken with students who have said that they didn't want a youth apprenticeship because they would rather have AP classes in their schedule than have a youth apprenticeship. I'm like currently at work at my youth apprenticeship, and I can say it's the best decision I made. It like cost me my class rank to an extent, but it has provided me so much more experience. And putting that on college applications means so much more than a number. Going to point that out as well. The last thing class rank kind of pushes people away from is sports and extracurriculars. Again, I've spoken with students who have like outright said they had to quit a sport or they had to stop doing clubs because they didn't have time because they spent so much time studying so they could take AP courses and succeed. And I think that is a really bad way to live high school because what you're going to remember is the memories, and there's more memories in extracurriculars and sports than there are in just academics. There's also so many more life lessons to be learned in sports and extracurriculars than there are in academics. And I think overall, colleges want more well-rounded students, so we need to make sure we're not putting too much like academic pressure on students. And instead, we need to be focusing on creating like good people out of the school. Now, I will not deny class rank has encouraged some of my classmates and I to get As. However, I don't think that like it worked out well in the way it was designed. So when I would study for a test, rather than focusing on concepts, I was learning. A lot of times I was just cramming the night before a test so I could do well on it. And when I was taking multiple AP classes, I was just trying to get As on each test, and I wasn't really fully understanding. I was just cramming and forgetting so I could put more information in my brain. That didn't help me in the long run. Now, a lot of the stuff I had to relearn at the end of the year before the AP test anyway, which is supposed to be the point of AP classes. So clearly, the weighted GPA in that aspect is not helping either. But there's so much pressure to try and get that like 5.0 into your GPA and compete sadly with your classmates, that that pressure is real. And that's just logistical of why class rank doesn't work. There's also a lot of emotional pressures, which I just started touching on. So both students in my grade and the grade above me like that I have spoken to and had actual conversations with, I'm not going to name names, but this is real conversations, have had issues with relationships between classmates and competition. I can say last year's valedictorian and salutatorian were not friends. This year's valedictorian and salutatorian are not friends. And that's really sad because there are really smart people who, if they were to work together, we'd have a much more collaborative environment. Everyone is trying to be that top person, and often students, admittedly myself, can lose perspective on our education because of that. So you get so focused on the number and you don't focus as much on the learning or the like relationships between classmates, which overall is so much more important in high school. We need to be focusing more on the memories of high school and like the memories in growing up and our adolescence than just to have a high GPA. I also have friends in other school districts, and they don't have class rank. Like we are one of the only ones in the area, and they don't even think about their class rank or GPA. And I have met some of the most bright academic individuals ever, or in Madison. I work in the biotechnology like youth apprenticeship program. So I've met people who do science as like teenagers, and they're so smart, and they don't care about their class rank, and they still get As in classes. So that's where you kind of see the internal desire to learn is more important to them than the GPA. Overall, if we want students to succeed in the future, we need to teach them the intrinsic desire to learn and try and reduce the outside pressure of class rank because it is not the way to do that, and it will not cause students to continue to succeed beyond high school. And that's kind of my overall thoughts. I've been really, like, this is something, again, that's very important to me, so.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Thank you, Lizzie. Thank you very much.
Good job.
We knew you could count on you for the truth.
But finishing with the truth.
I don't know if I can follow that up. That was good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And I think this is the right time to ask it. Historically, the valedictorian and salutatorian had the opportunity for scholarships at, in state schools, or I'm not exactly sure.
Yep, yep.
Is that still the case?
Yeah, we were actually just talking about that. So every year we have to, am I okay? So every year we have to give the state organization that gives out that academic excellence scholarship. So we give them the list of the top 10 GPAs in our class. And then whoever stays in state, like, you know, maybe the top two don't stay in state. Then we give it to the third or whomever comes next. So what we were talking about without class rank, we would still give them the highest 10 GPAs, but that wouldn't be like recognized anywhere. That would just kind of work itself out. They'd be notified, you know, if they're eligible for it.
Isn't that kind of counter to what, what we're trying to, to get through now, to kind of eliminate that? You know, as Lizzie said, it's a shame that the, the number one and number two kids can't be friends.
Yeah, I think what the thing is, though, we would never share a rank with a student, so they wouldn't even know.
Oh, I get it.
Yeah, so I don't think they would, it would just be like a surprise, you know?
They always seem to know who number one and number two is.
But if you, if you don't, like, we're the only ones who have access to that information. We're, you know, we're not going to share. The only time we're going to pull up that report would be for that exact scholarship.
Yeah.
So I mean, the other alternative would just be not having them get the scholarship, I guess.
We spoke with these schools to ask like how they're handling that. And it's kind of the same thing, like an unofficial, private thing that we would send. So unfortunately, until like the state of Wisconsin decides to change the academic excellence scholarship to not just be the top 10, that's kind of what we're working with.
Yeah.
I would definitely say.
Would that ever happen? We, you can submit, you can submit ones that are like tied. So I think like last year or the year before, we submitted 11.
It's still pretty rare, though. There's not many ties. Because it goes to the like, you know, third decimal, whatever that is. Sorry, I'm not a man.
It's a decimal.
A thousand.
But we would submit someone, like if you had two people that were the same. But we, we were slowly kind of building up to this, so we have made like class rank invisible to students, which in hindsight has caused like the line in our office and coming to talk to us.
But we have made progress. Yeah, we definitely, you see, we've already seen less over the last, I'd say, five or so years as we've put less emphasis on that, so.
Well, that's moving in the right direction, huh?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, kind of along that same topic, like right now, we have the Rock Valley Conference that we've still been attending, which is the top 10. So we're going to talk, I mean, we can kind of just talk about that because that's where we're going to recognize students in different ways. Like the top.
Career pathways.
Yeah, by pathways, like the top, you know, tech ed student. Or you know, departments could kind of recognize a student that they really think excels in their area, and it could be more about like character and, you know, kind of all those other important things.
That's an incredible event.
So.
That is, that is really fun to get to, and if anybody, you know, can manage to go witness that, it's, it's really cool.
What is that? I missed what you said.
It's called the Rock Valley Top 10, I think. Where each school in the conference has students that they sent to be recognized by the entire conference as opposed to just the school.
And that's still based, though, like you say, on, on a secret?
Right now it is. Well, no, right now, everyone knows that they're the top 10. You tell them you're in the top 10, you're invited to this event. But now we would again like have departments kind of pick someone based on criteria and recognize kids that way. And again, where then we're spreading the, you know, kind of.
So we're going to kind of lead the way in, in our conference. So if you look at Dane County, we're, we're behind in Dane County. But when you look at the schools in our conference, they are still doing like the academic top 10 for the Rock Valley top 10. But we're going to submit like by career pathways and teacher nominated. So it will be really cool to see students who wouldn't usually get to go, get to go to that event. And their plans will get like announced as they go on stage and things like that.
And it's difficult to quantify, you know, the whole student. You can quantify test scores and essays and, you know, hard tangible things that, that they do. But when you, when you want to, when you want to reward the whole student, it's a, it's a pretty difficult task. I mean, you're undertaking a, a significant change.
And realize there's going to be, there's no perfect solution out there. So you're going to end up just creating another problem. It may be better to do this, and I, after talking, after listening to what Lizzie said, I think there's an awful lot to be said. But you're, you're going to end up creating others like favoritism and why this person, why that. That's, that's just human nature.
You certainly had a few more slides, but you kind of marched into the proposed revisions and possibly next steps.
I, I just still not. I'm just not quite sure what that word collectivism means when I was reading through it.
Thank you, Bruce. I was going to ask the same thing.
I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, the, I think the easiest way to think of it is you can have like a collectivism or an individualistic culture. And like an individualistic culture of a school would be kind of what Lizzie was describing.
And typically more American, I would say, right? Where we're like competing against everybody else and not working together as a team. Like we're, collectivism is we're working together as a team to be better people together, not I'm competing with everybody.
So what we've seen, and Lizzie kind of alluded it to, like if I'm in an AP class and I know Jackie's number two, I don't really want to help Jackie on this project because.
That doesn't help me.
That doesn't help me. So we're trying to kind of back away from that a little bit and have more collaboration. And we've noticed class rank is kind of a barrier to that.
Well, that's, it's been ingrained. I mean, historically, that's, that was the goal. The goal was to have the highest GPA in your class, you know, for a group of kids.
Right, so it'll be, it'll be a cultural shift for sure. But yes, you're right, Jeff. So we, for social, emotional impact, I think one thing we just wanted to highlight, and Lizzie talked about that too, and you could see the emotion in her story, is we, and not that it's all blamed on class rank, right? But we have really seen an increase in the amount of students reporting to us if they feel anxious or are having thoughts of suicide. And we feel like if we can move away from that individualistic culture and kind of have people who are all in this together and supporting, we're hoping that'll be another step in the right direction as well.
Do you, do you know if, if America is unique as opposed to the other countries around the world that have become more successful in educating their kids than we have? Do you feel that's part of it in that they're not constantly banging their heads against?
Absolutely. We had people come from Norway, I believe, visited, and they were very collectivist. And yeah, just the mental health, we talked to the counselor there, much, much less.
Yes.
That's not surprising, unfortunately.
And I think one of the most disappointing things I've seen is when new students come to our district, students want to know their rank, and they want to know how they're going to affect the rank. And we've seen that.
This year.
Yeah, and I would argue McFarland's probably a hard district to move into anyways because you have groups of students who have been together. And we had, gosh, a new student last year, she really just really struggled because people weren't ready to welcome her because they were worried about her class rank. Yeah, so it's definitely ingrained. And that kind of moves on to the next point with equity. And you can see come of, some of the stats that we put on that handout. We actually have 10 years of data, if you're interested in seeing it, but we just kind of grabbed some snapshots for you. What we're really seeing is our students of color are not seeing themselves in their AP classes. So then if you think who's taking AP classes, you get that bump in your GPA, and then you're going to see yourself higher up in the class rank. So it's just an additional systemic barrier that we're hoping to kind of remove as well. And that's the data that the Equity Action Team put together. So we could for sure share all those spreadsheets with you afterwards if you're interested.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, we have all that, so we can do that. Anything you want to add about the data, Jackie?
No, I think if you have any questions about, you know, what the numbers mean or anything, let us know. But it, this has been a trend for, again, probably the last 10 years that we've seen this. I'm really excited that I feel like we're taking it in action scale. So it really feels good, and I kind of hope we can build on the momentum to keep kind of making these positive changes.
Well, that's, that's fantastic. And if there's anything we can do as, as a board or as an administration to, to assist you in any way, you know, don't ever hesitate to, to ask.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Yeah, you can go ahead. Oh. Is that Will?
Could I just, could I add something? I know I'm not technically a part of this. I just wanted to, to share some of my experience with this. This, just to be very brief, Mrs. Nichols hadn't invited me to, as a part of the link crew, speak to the incoming middle schoolers last week and answer some questions they had to, you know, sort of assure them as they're coming into a high school. And I was, personally, I was, am someone who's never cared about class rank or GPA or anything like that. But I was kind of shocked at how even in middle school, these kids are asking me like, how do we optimize our GPA? Like, it's, it's not just the high school. This culture is going down to the lower grades and everything. A, a lot of middle schoolers who are coming into high school are already worried about their GPA and class rank and everything. And I was trying to tell them like, for me, it's not been an issue at all. And like the admissions process is not based on that in my experience as well.
Thank you, Will.
So we're not saying that we're not going to acknowledge like academic.
Uh, so we're not saying that we're not going to acknowledge, like, academic progress or anything at all. We're just hoping to do it in a more, like, holistic, inclusive way. So we're going to continue our cum laude system, which recognizes groups of students, um, in GPA ranges. Academic awards will.
Can you explain that a little bit? That's, this is where I was.
Cum laude?
Yeah, I understand the term, but how do you do that in, as a group?
So you have, gosh, do you know them off the top of your head?
Oh, what the cutoff is? Oh, I was like.
I do.
Jeff does.
Oh, thank you, Jeff, saving the date. Didn't have that in the presentation.
Three point nine above is Suma, Magna is three, seven, two, three, eight, nine, and Cum Laude is three, five.
So it's like a GPA range, so all students in that range, um, would get acknowledged. And we're hoping to, instead of honor roll, we're going to do, like, Spartan Scholars and have a wider GPA range, and also give awards for, like, GPA improvement, so students who've made good progress, um, and like, students that are on their way to being a part of the Cum Laude system. So trying to include more students in that, and then continue the Rock Valley Top Ten, but we are going to try something new on the students we get to bring with us, and not just have it be based on the top ten GPAs.
Do you know where and when that is this year?
Jeff probably would. Jeff, do you know? Did it already happen?
Yeah, it has already happened online, there was a, there is a video that got sent out with each school listing off their top ten and voiced over, so I believe it's actually on our website.
Let's go to the next one, Angie. Do you want to talk about those, Jackie, the new stuff?
Well, these are just some other ideas, again, to, like, recognize more students, so, um, for instance, like, kids who get an apprenticeship, like, kind of recognizing that more, and I think we have, and we've seen on Facebook, right, trying to do more of that stuff to show success in other ways. Um, and then, like, department recognition quarterly, kind of like we talked about with the Rock Valley stuff, but this would be like a more quarterly basis, kind of like the optimist senior of the, the year, that, more of that kind of stuff, just to, again, highlight all the wonderful students that we have. And, you know, and not just based on GPA, but like, what are those other amazing things that we're seeing? And then, uh, the BIHOC Excellence Achievement Makers, so BEM Awards, so, um, recognizing our students of color that are doing amazing things as well.
Many years ago, we used to, I know in the Social Studies Department, we, we recognized, uh, a student, and it may have been even a couple of students. And I just think in my mind, you could do that again through technical, the tech ed department, you could do it through the marketing, you could do it through social studies, English, whatever, and have those scholars, or you want to call them what they are, so, I think this has a lot of promise.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're thinking. I think you can go ahead, Angie, yeah.
Well, that's the thing, students have such different strengths, right, and that's what we have to recognize, like, it's pretty hard to excel in every single, like, academic area, but let's kind of spread it out a bit.
Well, in a way, didn't the Spartan Award try to reflect that person who was, in a way, the most well-rounded, in some ways?
True, yeah, and that, and historically, that's, that's something that's never changed.
Yeah.
You know, that was way back when I was in high school, the Spartan Award started.
So we, um, presented this to our leadership team, our AP teachers, our staff, and everyone was on board, so that's great. We are looking at rolling this out as soon as next year, because of those students that have the pass fail already on their transcript. We feel like that's a good time, um, to kind of work with that. And then on your handout, you can see the Equity Action Team, we just need to figure out, like, what are these barriers that are, like, systemically in place, and who's taking our AP classes, and those are some of our next kind of goals, and looking at GEDO, our students, um, our students of color are overrepresented in our GED program as well. So those are the things that are.
And our at-risk program in general, the students that struggle, so, again, just more action steps.
I just have a comment. I remember when we went to grade weighting, we had quite a discussion on the board, and that wasn't a, a five oh vote. That was quite a discussion, which kind of comes right back to what you guys are talking about, we talked about when we did it, when it happened.
Sure.
So it's, it's, it's funny.
It's nice that you have the history, that's fun.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's kind of all we have, to give you an update there.
Nice job.
Well, thanks for having us, we decided to come in person, it's so hard to present on Zoom and not, like, be able to see everybody, so thanks for keeping us.
But we certainly appreciate all the hard work.
Yep.
Just, uh.
Thank you, as, oh, it's been a rough year for all of us, right?
And keep us, keep us in the loop on that, this, this is really interesting stuff, and I, I think it is what the future is going to be. Well, you know, when you've got however many school districts you have, and we're the only one that, you know, is hanging in there the way we do it.
Just as a, you know, FYI, there, there is no board policy that talks about grade point and/or a weighted grade. So there is no action item this evening, and we would do just that, we would come back and continue to update for probably the next couple of years how this is going. But there is no action item this evening, and there is no planned action item moving forward on this topic. This will be administratively handled by the high school.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you, nothing but support still.
Well, no, we appreciate you more.
Oh, I, we've all had a rough year, you guys included.
Again, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Okay, next is the Joint Professional Staff and Support Staff Employee Relations Committee Building Presentation, you as well.
Yes, so, um, I get to be a part of this, which is wonderful. Um, they voted me in to do, uh, four slides, and then each of the buildings have a representative, um, that will also contribute this evening. So for, for our community and those out there listening, um, just, you know, what is PESERC and SESERC? Um, it doesn't drive everybody berserk, so that's, that's our little joke there. Um, it's the Professional Support Staff Employee Relations Committees, they're formed by the Schools District of McFarland in conjunction with the McFarland Federation of Teachers and Support Staff Federation to serve as a means of representing professional and support staff regarding concerns, suggestions, and overall satisfaction of the work environment. Its purpose shall be to allow representatives from each school within the district the opportunity to listen, respond, make recommendations, and I highlighted this piece, and act as voice on behalf of the employees when meeting and conferring with the board and administration. All members view this engagement as essential to our overall success as learning organization. It is our priority to ensure professional and personal growth, create excellent working conditions for teaching and learning, and to provide outstanding customer service to our families and school community. Our collaborative work together is essential to providing a quality of education that each and every child deserves. We have many members in this, these are many of the folks that are involved in both PESERC and SESERC. There might be a couple adjustments with some recent changes with board membership, but certainly, uh, we have a collaborative voice that comes from all of the different buildings, and in particular, I'd like to say, on the SESERC side, we have many people from each building, but a lot of times they wear different hats, whether food service, EAs, custodians, so we have quite a collective group from that group as well. This evening, the Building Shareouts will be from each building coming up. Uh, many of these topics will have continued discussion at our meetings this coming summer, as we resume more defined goals and schedules for continued growth in the following areas, work in, uh, work environment satisfaction, collaborative decision-making, professional and personal growth, customer service to our families and school community, and quality education that each and every child deserves. Those bullet points come straight from mission that is in each of the handbooks, which I just read two slides ago. So that's where those focuses are. First up is Conrad, and I think Heidi Musso is with us this evening. Heidi, you're live.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great. Um, first of all, thank you for letting us have the opportunity to share about our school. I'm just going to go down, um, what was going well during non-COVID times. This was one of the hardest, because it was hard to remember, um, non-COVID times, but we know that our, our friends were learning, our students were learning. We created a school mission statement with input from all staff and families, we were very proud of that. Some of the growing edges and opportunities for growth included, um, trying to wait patiently for a literacy curriculum review, um, and monetary benefit for those staff not taking insurance benefits. Some of the suggestions, um, that we have for improvement for, in the future, would be to review retirement and health benefits to attract and retain new staff, um, at CEPS, and to adapt, uh, sorry, add additional holidays and snow days for support staff. Um, also, we would like to make sure that we're looking at our schedules and our procedures moving forward, of how we're doing things right now due to COVID. We are hoping that we can reflect on what really worked. Um, positive behavior at lunch, lunch spacing, um, washing and sanitizing, um, procedures, um, cohorts, and how the kids played in zones out at recess made it really, um, that much easier for supervision, and also led to less, um, injuries. There's a whole bunch of things that we'd really like to make sure that we're not throwing them out if we get to something that's a little bit more normal, um, and so that we have that opportunity to look at those. Um, during COVID, you know what, our friends are learning, they have been learning. Um, step three brought great connections with our students and a stronger sense of community, less behavior disruptions due to the smaller class sizes. Our safety routines kept us safe, and we're being updated as needed. We really appreciated having, um, building subs, it was an awesome, awesome thing to do. Um, and then I wanted to, um, we wanted to bring this up, that a year ago, March thirteenth, we really appreciated that all staff was paid for that time. Some growing edges, um, that we would really like to see, um, being considered, is an early release for PLC work that would, um, will continue to benefit our students greatly by ensuring equity, um, in curriculum and educational experiences for all of our students. Um, we would really love to see the idea of keeping our permanent building subs. And, um, something that we really thought, now, this was, this was created for December twenty-first, and this meeting has gotten bumped quite a few times. So we did a, a slideshow, put a slideshow together, because at that time, we were, um, face-to-face, and it looks different, so I don't know if you want to play that, or if you just want to look at it on your own.
Otherwise, we can certainly post it, if you'd like to, uh, circle back to it, as a, as a board member. Thank you, Heidi.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Heidi.
Next up, Amy Case. And Wabisa.
Hello, everyone, thanks for having us and allowing us to share. Um, I would like to say first that I appreciate, uh, Al Morehouse and Cory Chefcheck, and, uh, we have had a great partnership this year, meeting on a very consistent basis, um, and it's been a great partnership. And like to continue that, we, we talked today about, uh, continuing that next year, so, um, I'm actually going to start first with COVID. Um, so, um, things that we, um, really appreciated as a staff, um, and I, I guess I would like to, I'm speaking, I have spoken to the SESERC Support Staff Representative from our building, um, and gotten some input from them as well, so, um, they were feeling good about these things as well as, um, the rest of our staff. Um, we were feeling good in all the transitions, um, providing quality, consistent instruction, whether it be during COVID or non-COVID, um, lots of different changes from virtual to hybrid to full days. Um, the book Supply Swap that was created was phenomenal for staff, for students, for families. Um, it, it turned out really well, and we appreciate, we had some school board members join us a couple nights for that. Um, the strong communication, um, from administration all the way up and down to Cory and Al was phenomenal, um, and greatly appreciated. Uh, the teaching partnerships, uh, amongst our team members, working together and also in our cores, uh, feeling very safe in our building from the very first day we, we stepped foot in August. Um, and Cory and Al worked really hard to, uh, provide that for us. We also were happy to see that the VIP services were offered for the special ed students that needed to be able to come in and work with their staff. Um, during our hybrid time, we had minimal behaviors with the small groups, um, and lots of great things were happening in those small groups. Uh, we also appreciated the meetings and, um, parent-teacher conferences that were able to happen over Zoom. Um, and as Heidi had said, there are things that we learned in, during, um, COVID that we hope, um, are possibilities even in, uh, non-COVID times. Um, it was wonderful to be able to see both parents at a conference, because they were able to, um, you know, come into the Zoom, um, and have everybody present, which was really nice, and then, of course, for our meetings and collaboration. Um, as far as growing edges, um, our staff had asked throughout this whole process to continue to be a voice, um, in the policies and the procedures that were happening, um, which was wonderful. Um, the balance of data collection and instruction time, um, there was a lot of flexibility. We were hearing from families that they wanted, they needed and wanted more support in writing, and so the changes were made in order to do that. Um, I would have to say that the data collection currently is, has been kind of tough, um, it's been a lot. Um, so hopefully, next year, we can spread that out a little bit more. Um, and then as far as suggestions throughout COVID, um, that continued collaboration time with our teams, that, those Wednesdays were phenomenal, uh, looking at our learning targets and working together. Um, it's nice that the kids have, uh, more related arts now that we're face-to-face. Um, and then we've been working on a rooted schools wellness program to teach ourselves more wellness, but we would love to have more actual wellness kind of built into our, our days. Um, as far as non-COVID, hopefully moving ahead, looking at next year and things being a little bit more normal. Um, again, quality, consistent instruction, uh, strong communication, good school culture. Um, again, those small core collaborative teams and, uh, leadership partnerships. Um, continuing our work on culturally responsive teaching. Um, one thing that we, you know, we're, are, are hoping to see, the continued look at our PD, um, being more consistent and relevant, um, you know, having follow-ups, like, you know, we got a lot of canvas at the beginning, but a lot of that fell onto team members throughout the year. So getting those follow-up, uh, workshops and different things, and, like, we've had bridges at, at, uh, Wabisa for a couple of years, having those refreshers to get us back on, you know, track, or to look at the, the new things that have come out in that curriculum since, uh, we have started it. Continuing to be a voice and working with them on policies and procedures, that balance of instruction and data collection. And then we have talked quite a bit about diverse leadership and gathering input from all staff. This year was a difficult year in that oftentimes decisions needed to be made quickly. But it would be great if our leadership teams that go and represent us at our council were able to, on bigger decisions, come back, gather information from the whole team and then take that back as a representative. Let's see, we talked about learning goals, moving forward with those classroom partnerships, the literacy review, continuing with that. Respecting time and compensation for staff, after school, you know, I E P type meetings or coming in early for maybe S S T or a student meeting. The early release has been phenomenal on Wednesdays, hopefully seeing some kind of way we can fit that into our schedule. The playground, being in our zones, there are certain zones, our playground really could use a replacement at Wabisa. There are aspects that are still the original. So that is on kind of our wish list. And then adding some paint flair to the insides of our building. We did a great job. Cory and Al did a great job with the tiles down the main hallway, but we'd love to add some murals and, and some works within the building as well. So I think that covers about everything. Cory, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Job well done, Amy. Thank you.
Alrighty, I think off to the middle school here. I think we have Jerry Herbst, correct?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jerry.
Okay, okay. Yeah, like Heidi, like Amy, you know, thank you for, you know, letting us, allowing us to present. And again, as Jeff mentioned at the beginning, you know, this really is, in some ways it works out well coming at the end of the year, even though I think like, I think Heidi mentioned, you know, we had this originally scheduled for December twenty first, you know, it's sort of a nice, a nice, you know, look at our year and, and what went well and, you know, what we can improve upon. So anyway, going to the middle school, I'm going to take Amy's lead here and, and talk about the COVID side during COVID. Because I think that it makes good sense. So what's going well, what went well during COVID? Again, I know you've heard this a few times already, but the Wednesday collaboration and planning time with, with all members included in, in, in educational assistance, general ed, special ed, related arts. I, I've never been part of, you know, such an inclusive planning, you know, time as, as we've had on those Wednesdays. I mean, it is, it's, it's just, I, yeah, I can't, I can't tell you how invaluable that is to get all our staff involved and, and working in a meaningful way to, to really help kids. And again, our, it just says scheduled there, but again, I want to give credit to, you know, our schedulers, to Aaron and Brett for the, the schedule that we had at the middle school, the, the virtual schedule, the, and then the, and then the hybrid schedule. And of course now our, our face to face schedule, it just was such great foresight on their, their, their part, you know. We didn't really have to change our schedule per se. For example, we went to virtual to the, to the the hybrid model. So it really, it really has, it's just excellent, excellent thinking and planning by, you know, both those guys and, and the schedulers in our building. And then the designated building subs, it's just been so invaluable. It, again, obviously, you know, you, we, you can hear from the other buildings, we hope that's something that we can carry forward. And then, and then also the Zoom meetings and, and parent conferences. I mean, I really, when we talked about parent conferences and Zooms initially, I was skeptical. I thought, whoa, I wonder how this will go. And I got done and then looked at my partner and I said, holy cow, we'd be foolish not to continue this to some degree in the future. So that was, that was, you know, something that, that we really realized the value of as we went through our COVID times. And then growing edges during COVID, the tech learning curve was, was steep, you know, and stressful. I mean, we had Canvas, you know, infinite campus, standard based grading, Zoom, et cetera, kind of all hitting us at the beginning of the year. So that was, that was, that was a tough time. Concurrent teaching, as, as our earlier presentation, I think, brought out pretty clearly, or your, your work. I don't know, I can't remember the term you, you call it, but anyway, definite challenge, you know, it really was difficult to engage all students in this model. And then another growing edge for us during COVID, planning time for standards based grading reduced because of schedule combinations. So in the middle school as we, each grade is working towards the transition to standard space grading. It's, it's, it requires, you know, a, a lot of professional development time and a lot of work. And so that obviously took a little backseat with, you know, all the, all the work that we had to do to, you know, be able to teach virtually and in the hybrid model as well. And then suggestions for improvements, you know, considering the COVID times. Again, we referenced this, but tech initiatives, you know, probably need to include direct support from the company rather than having this burden fall on staff, particularly with, with Canvas. I mean, we, there were things that, as we went along, kind of figured out on our own and it would have really been nice to, you know, kind of have, have some, some, some people from the company to help us, you know, shortcut through those problems. And then not, we're moving to non-COVID times then, what's going well in our building, just strong supportive relationships among staff. You know, it's my thirtieth year here and it's pretty much always been that way. And, you know, it's a tribute to our, our administrators, it's a tribute to our guidance people. It's just, it's, it really makes me proud to be, you know, a, a member, you know, of our teaching staff. And then our administration does a great job, Brett and Aaron, working with a collaborative model. When I started here, we, we took a lot of pride in, in having shared decision making. And we have shared decision making, you know, in, in play at, at the, the middle school. And again, it's a, it's a, it's a tribute, you know, to, to Aaron and Brett. And then growing edges, non-COVID times, you know, prior to this, you know, lack of collaborative time for curriculum with all members included. So it was, even though I, I realized that we, as we go through the year and we have professional development days and it, it's, and we, and we have preparation periods during, during our school days. It's just not, it's not the same, particularly when we're trying to do in the school day with all this, you know, the stresses and, you know, different kinds of things that are tugging at us during the day. So, you know, to have those times where we don't have kids, it, it really makes for, you know, just such focused, efficient planning time and, and inclusive, you know, as I mentioned earlier. And then, you know, the challenge again, the meetings outside of the school day and Amy referenced those, you know, the I E Ps, you know, and other types of meetings that we're required to attend before and after our school day. And of course, you know, during the non-COVID times, you know, lack of guest teachers. We, we know that gets, gets worse, it seems like as, as we go forward in education. So, you know, that's something that we hope, you know, we can continue to, to work towards and improve. Suggestions for improvements, future goals in terms of non-COVID times. You know, having a bi-weekly early release, we, we, we realize having a release every week like we have had is, would be, you know, quite, quite difficult. But every other week, you know, some type of release, you know, to, to work and collaborate on curriculum would really be wonderful. And then compensation for meetings outside of the school day. And then competitive compensation to attract and retain. And, and we know some of these things, and of course this, you know, we're, we're working on and, and we appreciate that as well. So thank you very much. Yeah, I guess, again, I want to credit, you know, Aaron and Brett, they, they do a great job running our ship and you know, we appreciate, you know, the, the collaboration, the positive collaboration and the voice that they, they give us.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
Moving on to the high school, Jessica Garvey, correct?
Hi, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, I am Jessica Garvey. I teach math at the high school and one, I'm a co-department chair. I also coach swimming and soccer, so overly involved as most Garveys are. So instead of highlighting some of, because if you look at the very bottom of this slide, you can kind of see the suggestions for improvement are very similar to some of the other buildings. And we're going to, after I'm done, we'll kind of pass it back to Jerry so he can summarize some of those highlights. I'm going to focus a little bit and give kind of a brief summary on some very high school specific things because we are in a very different situation than the rest of our buildings. So I want to kind of direct you, when it talks about, I guess first I should start off with, with our schedule. We are currently in what we call a four by four model. So what that means is every student, I shouldn't say every student, but the majority of our students can enroll in opt two four classes. And they have that class for a quarter, which is approximately nine weeks and we'll say a regular year. And then every quarter they switch teachers. And so for example, for math, they might have math first quarter and fourth quarter. So that's just an example of what the model we're working within now. And then starting next year, the plan is to transition back into our A day, B day schedule, which means they have eight classes at once. And it is every other day. So our sophomores are, I guess our juniors and seniors next year are going to be used to that, our incoming freshmen and are going to be sophomores have an experience that eight classes. So that I think is a big transitional piece for a lot of our students. Because right now they only have four classes to worry about, which we thought was a priority during COVID. So that's kind of one component that's a shift for us. And then I also want to highlight during COVID, a lot of our staff has emphasized that they really benefit from these one-on-one conversations that we've been able to have. If you didn't know, high school kids don't really communicate a ton over Zoom. So a lot of students do utilize the chat a lot or they'll open up when you are one-on-one in a breakout. And I think there's just that lack of pressure when there's not other students that can hear what you're saying. So we're having a lot of conversations right now within our departments and within our building and how can we transition that from the, the quick question that a kid can ask in the chat that they would never raise their hand and ask in class? And how can we try to facilitate that in a normal classroom? So trying, that's one of the big things that we thought was really successful in this crazy year with Zoom that we feel like we lost a little bit now that we're back in person. So that's one thing that we're talking a lot about. I will also highlight the building subs have been fantastic. Scott Mauricio Wheeler is our main building sub right now and he has just been very helpful in knowing that he's kind of our go-to that we can rely on has been very helpful for us at the high school. Another thing that's a big kind of talking point right now is we used to utilize a system called A S R, which is our all-school resource. And you'll notice on the left side where it says non-COVID times, we had this before COVID and we put it under growing edges because I think the building as a whole does not use it all for the same reasons. Some teachers use it as more of an intervention time to work with students. Some teachers use it as, oh, you were gone yesterday, here's what you missed. And so, which is all good things, but we're trying to find a unified vision for all of us because this year that shifted into afternoon office hours. And so now we're trying to find a middle ground to, and maybe that's where that gap comes with the one-on-one support. And so that's one of our growing edges. How, how can we solidify a unified vision for that kind of moving into next year? And then I think the other thing, just to highlight, what's different, at least K five to six twelve is when we have our collaborative planning time, it's very focused within our discipline. So when we have what we call our P L C time, it's just the math department. So we don't really have a lot of opportunity to collaborate outside. And so just like the other buildings, we're really pushing for that early release, especially to collaborate with special ed services and student services outside of the normal P D days. And that is definitely an emphasis for us so we can collaborate with those other buildings. So, and like I said, I, I am going to pass it back to Jerry just because he has some highlights and the high school also has all of those same goals that you can see on the bottom. But I did want to highlight some differences that are very building specific to us. So is there any questions about high school specific stuff that I talked about before I pass it back to Jerry?
I've got, I've got one that I'm not at all sure is relevant right now, but I, I'm just curious. The, when we began the standards based grading, it was, you know, quite the controversial subject and, and given the last, you know, fourteen months or so with the COVID, I've, I've kind of put that on a back burner. And I'm just wondering if you can kind of give me a real brief synopsis on where we stand with the standards based grading, if, if that slowed down, if the impetus slowed down during COVID or if we just kept chugging away as, as we expected.
Yeah, well, I will say, and Jeff, you can hop in at any point, but I will say, starting next year, all of our, we're still kind of rolling on that train. The majority of our classes right now are taught in standard space. And I think the plan is to next year that will also include our A P classes. So starting in fall, all of our courses will be standard based. I think what kind of changes is that might look a little different depending on the discipline. Like in math, it's a pretty specific way that we assess compared to how foreign language does it compared to how the science department does it. But every department does have a standards based grading system and it will be fully implemented in this coming fall. So we're still rolling with it. I would say, I know at first it was very controversial and I think one huge benefit, especially in this crazy pandemic time, we're just constantly using the language of, well, okay, we're here, we're not there yet and we can just use more evidence to show our understanding over time. And I think that's been a slow shift, but we're slowly getting there. As we kind of, as you get students that are coming up and getting used to the process, it's not, well, I got this, it is what it is. It's, oh, maybe if I try and reassess this, I can improve that score with just another piece, if that makes sense. And like I said, Jeff, feel free to add into that.
I would think you did a great job explaining where we're at. Nice job. I would also add, I think because we were so entrenched in standards based grading, it may have helped us during COVID times because we knew how to really identify those essential understandings and could focus on that. So I think that was a benefit for us.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move along to a wrap up with Jerry.
Thanks, Jess. Craig, I'm just going to piggyback off Jess and just kind of update you on the, the progress of the standards based grading in the middle school. And Aaron, Brett, feel free to, to chime in. I may not be accurate with everything I say, but so sixth grade is in full, full implementation of standard grade, grading. I think they were last year too. I, I think it was our first year, fully, full year of implementation and then this year. And then seventh grade is what they, they have their first year of implementation this year, I think.
Next year.
Next year, that's right. Yeah, thanks, Jerry. Yeah, next year. And then the following year will be eighth grade. So just thought, you know, you'd want to kind of an update of where the middle school is with that as well. So, yeah, you're welcome. So common themes across the buildings. And so I just, we just tried to kind of pull together consistent things that, that we saw. And these are suggestions, obviously, we probably should have put, you know, some common, common positives in here, apologize for that, but continue some type of early release model to facilitate curriculum planning. Provide more consistent professional development, especially for new curricular and technology related initiatives. Continue Zoom meetings, you know, to promote safety, convenience and efficiency, especially for parent teacher conferences. Respect required staff work time outside of work hours, compensating staff for their time in these situations would be a great start. Continuing having permanent building substitute teachers, this makes a huge difference for students and staff. And discontinue any requirement for staff to teach concurrently. And that's maybe not the, the word I want to discontinue, but I, again, it's, it's, it's really been, it's been difficult. We've done our best with it, but it's, it's certainly, you know, not, not the best, it's not the optimal learning situation for our kids. So you know, if we, obviously that depends on what, what happens with the health situation moving forward, but it seems to be a, a pretty common sentiment among our, our teachers. So with that, you know, thank you very much. Yeah, we appreciate it. And again, like I said, when I started that, that it really, in some ways, this works out pretty well being, end, end of the year because, you know, it sort of gives us what, you know, what went well and, and what we can continue to work on. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Thanks to everybody. I hope everyone's still on there. Can we get a copy of these slides, especially the C P, C P S link? Not the second, sorry. But there was a lot to digest and really great stuff. And so I'd like to look at them again, but thank you, thank you all. I don't actually have any questions. It was really well done.
Yeah, I thought this was a wonderful presentation. I noticed, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Certainly many of the items that were, and some of these, as Jerry mentioned, were things that we were going to report out in December and then again, February it got canceled and here this evening, but a, a lot of these topics have also come through our Suzerk and Suzerk work and would be continuing. And so if you wanted me to transition to item number nine.
Please do.
All right.
Yeah.
So, uh, district administration report, uh, there are, uh, we have an update on professional staff, berserk update, sizzerk update. Then I'll talk a little bit about the update on the village, uh, board, school board ad hoc committee. And then we'll have a short presentation of the school status reminders and updates. From a perspective of berserk and sizzerk, uh, berserk, uh, met, uh, five times. That included three subcommittee meetings since, uh, February. And, uh, sizzerk, I'm going to kind of parallel them a little bit. Sizzerk meant, uh, three times, but with their full committees. Uh, first of all, unusual year. Um, really the most work in earnest hadn't been done since February of 2020. And as you know, this evening, you're kind of having a long meeting with lots of topics. And, and that's partly because of certainly COVID nineteen interrupted a lot of, uh, work. But certainly we, we got through a lot, uh, since February. Uh, we had great collaboration from our teams from many meetings that started in February. Um, as I mentioned, the last meeting was in February of 2020 with really both groups doing much of their work. We did a lot with surveying our, our staff, both with the professional staff and our support staff. We had lots of good dialogue during those meetings with, uh, the surveys being, uh, the topics of our first, uh, meetings that after those, uh, survey. We had a lot of takeaways, a focus was on more so the short term of wages and benefit items, and some of those items are on this evening's, uh, board meeting. Um, and specifically looking at, uh, area districts, how are we dealing with our neighbors? How are we competing with our neighbors? Um, and when I talk about competition, it's competing to attract and retain and specifically retaining our, our staff as well. So again, there are some good things that came out of our, uh, work with both berserk and sizzerk. Uh, both groups, and I think this is the important piece that takes some of the dialogue that we had in that last report, is both groups have committed to meetings month, meeting monthly, starting in July and/or August, so that we can continue dialogues such as, uh, early release. Um, and as we reported as sizzerk and berserk, that we would take and talk more with that and try to put together a succinct plan for, if we were to start something like that in 22, 23, how would that impact all of our different areas? And so in earnest, uh, we need both of those groups to, uh, meet starting in, uh, July and if, or August. Um, again, we also have major topics like looking at benefits such as our health insurance. And, and while we have a, a second guarantee or, uh, additional year added by Dean for our current plan, uh, they gave us a, a, so we have 21, 22 coming up, but they also gave us 22, 23. That doesn't mean we need to slow down our, our, I want to call it passion to meet about health insurance, but it's certainly a heavy topic that we have to have all groups involved in. Um, this evening, uh, you'll have action items on our professional staff salary schedules for both 21, 22 and 22, 23. And those were, uh, sent forward to us by, uh, berserk. For sizzerk, you'll have wage schedules for, uh, 21, 22. You also, for sizzerk, have benefit language changes specific to medical insurance changes so that we can stay in tune with the Affordable Care Act and also, uh, be in line percentage-wise with even just our own internal groups and also to, uh, be competitive with our neighbors. There'll be benefit language change action items with regards to holidays. You'll note, uh, an item that was on, um, the, um, CEPS slide about holidays. Um, and so we have a, uh, wage, excuse me, a benefit language change that we're recommending this evening with regards to support staff, uh, that work in the school year, uh, making that equitable with, uh, the rest of our staff. So a lot of work, uh, between berserk and sizzerk. Um, we have lots of work to continue. There's, you know, when you are a people industry and you have your, your largest expense for the whole budget, over eighty percent of your expenditures is people.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, I, I don't want to say our widgets are, uh, students, but in the end, we have people that are helping, um, this is the business manager side coming on a little bit. Uh, you know, we, we certainly are, we're, our whole business is people. So, uh, certainly a lot to get, uh, moving with berserk and sizzerk. Uh, we have common themes that were reported here, uh, some that are things that are very tangible and some things that will take more dialogue. So I think one of the biggest realities, uh, that was even in the berserk meetings was our conversation about our, some of our practices dating back to 1992. And that we have a, a long way to go with our handbooks, uh, compared to some of our neighbors. So, and that, a handbook talks about benefits, wage, working conditions. So, uh, look forward to getting those meetings moving along in July and/or August.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be my berserk and sizzerk. So I kind of crossed off nine A and nine B, Craig.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, nine C, um, update on McFarland Village Board, School Board Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, Craig and I met with, uh, Village President Carolyn Cloud and Matt Schumke, Village Administrator, last week. Uh, we're looking at a, um, well, it's not an ad hoc committee meeting, we're looking at, uh, being presenters at a June twenty eighth village meeting that is being held for the village to talk about, uh, much of their equity work that they've been doing. And we are finalizing, uh, whether that's an invite for all of our board to be there or just, uh, our village ad hoc, uh, committee members, which is Bruce Arlen and Christine. Um, so we'll give more information about that. Again, looking at June twenty eighth, that's a, that would be a village board meeting. Um, so we'll get some more details on that. The meeting focus would be again on the equity committee work that the village does and that the school district has been doing. And both Melissa and Aaron would be, um, there to present for our school district about our past, present and future work, um, in these topics. Um, additionally, for those that are part of the ad hoc, the ad hoc committee of the joint village school board, um, we're looking at likely starting in August, having every other meet, every other month meetings for a while to, uh, kind of catch back up from, uh, COVID times, I'll call it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, funny little thing. Uh, I told a couple of administrators I might get punchy towards the end here, so I must be getting closer to the end.
You warned us.
Um, but, uh, we're looking at that fourth Tuesday of every other month, starting in August. So for those keeping track at home, that'd be August twenty fourth and October twenty sixth. And those meetings, if possible, with all members could start, you know, three o'clock, four o'clock. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be something into the evening. So that would conclude nine C. If there are not any questions on those three items, I would turn it over to Melissa and Lauren for nine D, which is school status reminders and updates.
Hello again. Um, so you will see we have a, a brief school status report to give you tonight. Um, so tonight we are just going to be talking through a health update as, as we usually do, um, a brief update about the early release scheduling planning, and we're ending with appreciation. So just a few topics this morning, this evening, this evening.
It could be morning. We have done that.
It all blends together. Uh, so our health updates for today are, we, the McFarland School District will partner with Ford Pharmacy. So as you recall from our last board meeting, we were able to partner with Ford Pharmacy to have our fifteen and up students vaccinated here on site. Um, we had about sixty students participate. We are again going to partner with Ford Pharmacy to best determine how to provide an opportunity for our twelve-year-olds and older students to receive their vaccinations. Um, one of the concerns is by, by the time that the twelve-year-olds would be eligible for their second vaccine, we will be out of school. So we are trying to come up with a, a plan so that their second vaccine is not a cumbersome process. So this may look a little bit different than having a vaccine clinic here on site. But we are just in kind of the early stages of talking with Ford Pharmacy on that. Um, we also had reached out to SSM Health. However, their first available time to have a clinic onsite with us was not until the end of June and we were hoping for something a little bit sooner. So the second update is just, as you are probably aware, CDC released their guidance on masking. The district continues to follow public health, which states masking is still required here in our buildings and we don't anticipate changing any of our mitigation strategies, um, prior to the end of the year. So kind of status quo from now until the end of the year. And then looking at some changes for next year, including that quarantining, possibly masking, um, depending on vaccination status. So we will kind of have to wait and see what that looks like. Um, all right, I am going to turn it over to Melissa for an update on early release scheduling.
Thank you, Lauren. Two weeks ago, we shared with the board some early tentative, um, information about thinking about an early release structure. Um, as we heard from the berserk and sizzerk updates or from the, yeah, the berserk and sizzerk update this evening, that that time for teachers to be able to collaborate in the schedule is very valuable and that's something that we've heard from teachers that they would like to see continue if possible. So berserk and sizzerk will have monthly meetings beginning in July. And through those meetings, we will work to develop a plan for no earlier than the twenty-two, twenty-three school year that we would bring forward with the calendar for, um, the calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three, um, that the board typically approves in November of each year. Now, the considerations, I see that I wrote a draft on this slide and didn't finish my whole thoughts, um, so I apologize for that here. But the considerations for those discussions that we shared with berserk and sizzerk during the meetings have to do with family input, um, daycare, how does this, how would a change in schedule impact the local daycares, particularly but not limited to our 4K providers that we work with regularly, um, the transportation impact? And then there was some conversation about utilizing some of that time for district-wide professional development. And if we wanted some sort of district-wide structure to be included in the plan, how would we be able to coordinate schedules across buildings? And there could be changes necessary for all building schedules to make the early release structure work into our calendar. So there are a number of, um, kind of details that would need to be worked out with that plan and we would want to be able to gather some wide-ranging feedback before moving forward. And that's what we'll work on in those monthly berserk and sizzerk meetings going forward. Any questions before we end with appreciations? All right. So to wrap up, it's always nice to end with appreciations at the end. Um, Terry Miller is consistently putting the needs of her students first. Terry is kind, patient and always seeing the big picture. We appreciate you. Thank you to our EC eight PTO for their special treats and appreciations during teacher and staff appreciation week and throughout the school year. The IMMS Building Council is an amazing professional learning community that always keeps students at the forefront of their decisions and has led with empathy during this difficult year. Thank you. And finally, thank you, Mr. Addison, for being flexible and willing to adjust your related arts schedule for students you don't directly work with. Thanks so much for your time this evening on the school status report.
Thanks, Melissa and Lauren. Thank you very much. Next up would be, I had one more, which is item nine E, which is our exciting twenty-one, twenty-two family handbooks. And I believe Mr. John Dahl is going to join us to kind of highlight over some of those changes. Is Brett still available?
Hello, sorry, I was muted.
Looks familiar.
Hi, Brett, thank you.
You bet. I'm just going to pull it up real quickly. Uh, first off, were there any questions that came up, um, from the board as you looked over the, um, handbook? Just wanted to start with that. What questions might you have?
I, I didn't have questions, but I, I really appreciate a number of the changes that you're making, especially around the hate speech. And I'm sure you'll highlight some of that, but yep. Did I interrupt?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
No, it seemed very topical, you know, in terms of what's going on today. I think the changes you made are necessary.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of that work, I have to give, uh, credit to the high school. Sarah Busilaki, Anne Nichols really, um, led us through that. They associate principals throughout the, this year as we looked to make changes. Um, so I just wanted to give credit to both of them for their work to initiate that and of course to all of you for, um, you know, really embracing that as we move throughout this year and beyond. So thank you very much, Sarah and Anne, and for the, for all of you for that. Um, as we look through the handbook, I'm just looking through it myself, and, um, some of the things that I did do, um, just some minor things, I, I went through and added links to, um, any of the, um, policies that were mentioned in the handbook. And that came from, um, the Indian Mountain staff. What we did is we shared the handbook with our staff and I think each, each campus did the same thing with either their equity team or their building staff in general, just asking for continued ways that we can improve our handbook to make it accessible for all families. And, um, just one of the, the things that came up was making sure that policies that were mentioned in the handbook, we could link, provide a direct link to that so that, uh, for some of our families, they use their phone as their, their only device that they use to access the information. So we wanted to make it as accessible as possible. Um, so that was kind of the, the impetus behind the change of adding those links. Um, again, those are just highlighted. Some of the other work that we did, um, with the dress code, you'll notice, or you'll, you'll, you will notice that, um, we added, um, hats and hoods for the middle school in particular, that came up as a discussion with our staff. Um, and I think in other buildings, the younger buildings as well, uh, if you remember, the high schools has had the hats and hoods being allowed, um, nine, twelve, but we looked at it, um, from a K eight perspective. And the middle school, um, highlighted just having hats and hoods being allowed for our students, um, this last part of the year. Um, and one of the, one of the, you know, there's lots of, uh, different viewpoints on that. We didn't really have a reason to not, or to, um, prohibit the, the, the wearing of hats and hoods, but we did know that there are some benefits. And some of those benefits would be for our students who, um, whether they have, uh, part of a plan, a behavior plan of being allowed to wear a hood or a hat as a way to provide security for them and as they work through that anxiety or, um, difficult situations. And we felt that, um, that is, if we don't have a policy that allows it, it, it almost singles out those students that have it as part of their plan. And so, um, from that perspective, we also wanted, thought that it was important to, to try this out and allow it. So that was something that was changed. Also, you'll note, um, as you look at the dress code, highlight, highlighted changes, um, we added, um, the information that you all passed with, I believe it was fifty-five eleven. I, I, I might have, uh, misinterpreted or misspoke on the policy number, but that's with, um, the dress and grooming, um, policy. And I'm just going to pull that up real quick to make sure I'm referencing the correct fifty-five eleven dressed and grooming. And, um, we did adjust that to the dress code as well in our, in our handbook. And then just some other things, um, you know, speaking of equity, um, many of the buildings also noticed that in our handbook, we did not have gender-neutral pronouns. And so we went through, I went through and adjusted all that to make sure that our, um, statements are, again, um, having a way to reach all students and allowing them to see themselves in these policies and procedures. Um, so that was changed as well. Um, we added the nondiscrimination policy to the, the handbook, um, as well. You'll notice that as you look through that. And I think those are the biggest changes. And as I mentioned earlier, um, we really wanted to make sure that we are looking through these policies and procedures, um, from an equity lens, making sure that, um, you know, that students and families see themselves in this, in this hand, that they can relate to it. And that also are kind of our next steps, if you're wondering what that may be. We will be sharing the handbook with some specific policies, um, and, and asking for family input on, um, their thoughts as well. That'll be something we work towards this summer. Um, and then of course updating you all with what we, the feedback we get from families. But, um, those are just some of the, the brief updates. I don't want to take too much more of your time. Um, but that's the work that, uh, we did as an AP associate principal group, um, the past few weeks.
All right. Thank you very much, Brett.
You bet.
If there are no other questions, I'll move on, move on to nine F, uh, posting school board meeting notices and...
That's just great work. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I guess I kind of asked and went right by.
You're moving us along. I know, but I, that's good work.
So, description board policy specifies where the school board adjournments shall be posted. Uh, below are the recommended posting sites, McFarland Thistle, McFarland Cable Channel, Village Hall. Village Hall, the library, McFarland State Bank, which now is...
One community.
One community bank, so we'll get that adjusted. The cafe, the school district website, McFarland High School, and our other, three other schools. This evening, we do have a couple of district photos, so why don't we go ahead? We should at least see some photos. We've been, we keep saying we're gonna have photos, and then we keep saying the meetings are going along, which this evening is, but, you know, here are just, and we'll just kind of scroll through them, because certainly the pictures are a thousand words, and it's just wonderful. You can see that collaborative space that was built as part of our referendum, that collaborative outside space outside of the library. So that is certainly a really cool area. And then, yeah, great weather, getting on the bikes, hats off to our village for helping us with having crossing guards in a few extra locations.
Good.
They've been a great partner this year. We've had some crossing guards that are there from 11:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon at the same site.
Yeah, you bet.
We're certainly using our community, our community levy a little bit more uniquely this year, and that's something that we can do, so we did partner with them. But hats off to John Miller and the team over there. That is one cool shot. I'm really glad that we didn't get a work, or a injury report on that one, so, and then we can just kind of keep going. Yeah, just, you know, that's... Prom? That's your class of 2021?
Oh, like that.
And that is your state soccer champions. Congratulations to that team.
What time did they get back into town, do you know?
I don't.
I heard it was...
About 10:30.
Yeah, yeah.
Alrighty, that kind of concludes our pictures there. 9H, future school board meeting dates, we have June 7th, just a reminder. Dr. Anderson will be joining us on that evening, and then June 21st, and then we have a little bit of a break, and July 19th for the three upcoming school board meetings. But obviously, you heard this evening that there might be some other meetings with the village, and that we're gonna take on some Berserk and Sizzerk work, starting a little earlier and going a little bit more on a monthly basis. So are there questions for the district administration report that seem to go on halfway through the alphabet?
No, no. Anybody got anything?
No.
Well, we can move on to our action items then. The first is action on Summer 2021 Extended Contracts. Administration recommends approval of the attached extended contracts. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Christine?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next is, excuse me here, Action on Recommended Fee Schedule for 2021-22. Administration recommends approval of the attached fee schedule. Could I have a motion for approval?
I'd say no.
Harlan? You have a second?
I'll second.
Uh...
Who you got?
Kate.
Kate, all right. Any additional, any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Action on 2021-22 and 2022-23 Professional Staff Salary Schedules. Administration recommends the 2021-22 and 2022-23 Professional Staff Salary Schedules as attached. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Bruce? Second?
I'll second.
Harlan? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Action on 2021-22 Support Staff and District-Wide Support Staff Wage Schedules. Administration recommends approval of the support staff and district-wide support staff wage schedules as attached. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Kate? Second?
I'll second.
Christine?
Sorry.
Okay, any other, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Sorry.
And Action on Revision to Support Staff-Employ Handbook. Administration recommends approval of the attached recommended revisions to the Support Staff-Employ Handbook. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Christine? Second?
I'll second that.
Bruce? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Discussion and Possible Action on 2021-22 McFarland School Year Planning. Do I have a motion for approval?
I move.
Harlan? Second?
I'll second.
Kate? Discussion?
So, the discussion that would potentially come forward is from the work session of what administration had recommended, which I can reread.
Would you please? Because this is something a little different.
I got stuck in my chair by my ID.
Hazard duty paid coming up.
It's fitting for the topic.
Yeah, good morning, right?
Yeah. So, because you were all here, and for our listeners, our board was part of gathering information from the administration due to survey information, and we provided information about virtual options versus for how things have worked this year and how things could work next year. However, on our last note that we provided, based on our data and our thinking right now, is that our administrative team as a whole, and the consensus from our teachers on building leadership teams, is our best path forward is maintain our focus on in-person instruction planning and not offer a full-time in-house virtual option for all students for 21-22, but rather, administration's recommends that we'll do everything we can to help fam, families find appropriate placement for families that neither in-person instruction might not work, or WEVA is not the best fit for their child due to COVID. In our, in our summary, that would mean that we would be taking a targeted approach to meet with families as we progress between now and within, boy, we're getting close to 100 days to the next start of the school year. So that would be our focus of our work.
Are we ready to make a decision on the administration's recommendation based on discussion held earlier tonight at our work session? We don't necessarily have to vote on it this evening. If we feel like it warrants further discussion, maybe more in-depth, or maybe we could think of issues that we're not thinking of right now, or do we want to go ahead and approve the recommendation? Anyone?
So, I think that it's in our best interest to discuss this and try to move forward so that they can start planning one way or the other, either hiring more teachers if they can find them, or planning to help these families who want to stay virtual.
I think that's why maybe the 100 days was mentioned a few times earlier, that...
I'm not positive it's 100 days.
No, I understand, and this, you know... Well, I'll just kind of sit back and listen to see what you folks think, whether we should proceed based on the information we have now, or whether it warrants further discussion, and when we could hold that discussion, I guess.
Well, I think, I think we should think about the consequences of what we're seeing, and I really struggle whenever things are either or. I just do, I feel like there's always some maybe compromise in the middle. So, if we go with the targeted route, what we're basically saying to a number of families, and it doesn't even matter the numbers, that you will no longer be part of McFarland. We're essentially saying you're going to WEVA, you're going somewhere else, we're not going, you're, you're no longer part of McFarland, because that's what happened. Anyone who went to WEVA didn't have the connections, the same teachers, the curriculum. So all of those people came back and behind either due to pandemic or a totally different curriculum. So now we may have 60 families across the district coming with 10 different curriculums, all coming back eventually, hopefully. So I think we just need to think about the consequences of that. It's not, it's just gonna exacerbate what everyone felt when, you know, and, and, and what that, what that means. To go to the other end, once again, I'm always somewhere in the middle. I feel like we can negotiate, and we can come to some common ideas. I don't see the numbers to say we should hire someone at every staff level. I completely appreciate the issue with that, with hiring, all sorts of things. Everyone brought up really good reasons why we shouldn't do that, but I think there's some good in that, that I feel like we could pull into the more targeted approach, because otherwise, we're basically saying to all of those families who are the most, you know, who can't get vaccinated because of age, who are immunocompromised, who may be a person of color, are most vulnerable populations, you cannot fit in McFarland right now. That's what we're saying.
They did remedy that to some degree, though, after they, after the complaints reached a level of, you know, why don't we get these emails? Why aren't we a part of this? And why?
That doesn't change the curriculum, though.
Right. No, no, no. I'm just saying, as far as being connected to McFarland in terms of you're notified about events, you're included in the emails that are sent out, you know, to the entire student body. And I'm, the only reason I bring that up is just for clarification, is I, I think that was addressed to some degree. Obviously, the curriculum issue is always gonna be there.
Well, yeah, and there was also issues with, yeah, the curriculum issue also, you know, families were virtual for band, and then when they started back in band, once it went in person, they virtually couldn't do it. So then they, they started and then had to stop.
That's true.
I mean, so there's, I mean, I just, once again, there's some consequences here of what we're, what we're saying, and I guess I just wanna think a little bit more strategically about, there, once again, maybe a middle ground, and I don't know exactly what that is, but that's my feeling right now.
Bruce?
I, I've been quiet on this whole thing. I, I just feel like I'm literally proverbial rock and hard place, I'm in the middle.
Welcome to the school board, Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Welcome to the school board. The thing that is, is frustrating for me is that I would like to have more time to discuss this, but I know, as I learn more about the school board, in a way, we're not really allowed to do that, and I just feel like we're making a momentous decision on, literally, you know, kind of like, I feel somewhat like you're flipping a coin, and I just think, man, it requires more time. At the same time, I think, I, I very strongly heard what Jeff said, and I look at it, you know, kind of as a fiscal conservative, I'm going like, you know, we can't continue to afford all this. I was struck very much by, I think it was Amy, I don't remember, or it may have been Heidi Masso, when she talked about how grateful people were for, you know, that May 13th, and the fact that they got paid afterwards, because there was no...
March 13th.
Oh, March, excuse me, yeah, March 13th, last year. And I'm going like, you know, we just can't keep on running on this, you know, running on empty here. So, I, I just wish there was a way we could somehow just, you know, short of having another school board meeting or something, where we could actually sit and talk about this.
Harlan?
I think, like Jeff said, a lot of the districts are struggling with this. We all are under the same fiscal responsibility and, and how we look at it. It, it looked like we're gonna, on our percentages, it's gonna be very small numbers, and to start loading up with staff and, and trying to accomplish that, and I, I think it throws some balls up in the air. I understand the issues about people, about where they want to be, they want to do this at home, but this isn't what we, before COVID, we come to school. If we can get kids back in school, I think the, the personal side of it was always a big push for all the people talking about getting to see and getting to work and, and it's better for the staff to read the kid right now when it is, you know, not in, in the distance or trying to cover things. I think there's, there's a lot of balls up in the air, and if we do, for me, I can talk for myself, for me, for what I seen tonight, and I, I looked at it fairly, I, unless we have a, we have to deal with a situation, I think the best thing for kids is to come back to school. And if we have to do something different, it's either we collaborate with other schools to, how we could share costs, I don't know what it is, this is a lot to throw at us at one meeting and make a decision on, but when I got done listening to everything tonight, I, I, I could not vote for to do that, because I, I don't think it'd be best for kids and for the district. That's just my two cents.
We do not have to make a decision tonight.
So, I think we need to think about a couple of things here. Number one, we do, although it's not the option that everyone would choose, we do still have WEVA attached to this district, and I realize that it's not for everyone, so, you know, I understand that. But we have a luxury with that, that maybe not everyone is always thinking of when they're thinking about this option going forward. The question I would ask is, are we going to be able to provide these families with the virtual experience that they're looking for going forward? So, you know, they want to be connected to the district, they want to follow the same curriculum. I think if we're gonna purchase this other curriculum, that it, it doesn't make sense to do it. If we're gonna be purchasing another curriculum, it's not even gonna be our own curriculum.
That's right.
Because then it's just like telling them, you should go to a virtual school, in my, in my opinion. So, are they going to get what they're looking for? You know, this past year, there was a lot going on, there was a lot that people were looking for, and things have changed dramatically, I think, since you guys, looking at you three, discussed it, when you decided to create that virtual option. The question now is, hearing the staff say that they aren't interested in teaching concurrently, I mean, I think we have to listen to them, too, what's working and what wasn't, and did they feel like they weren't meeting the needs of those virtual kids? Because the last thing I want to do is provide this option and then have children not receive the kind of education that they deserve to receive, because we either don't have the means to do it, or the staff to do it, or we stretch our staff that are currently doing it concurrently to do that. So, those are the, kind of the things that I pose when we're deciding if, if this is the correct way to move forward, is are we gonna be able to offer them what they're looking for? And based on some of the emails I received, and we all received, I think the expectations might be a little higher than what we can provide in some of those cases.
Yeah, I just, I, do you mind if I?
Oh, no.
I just, first of all, I'm just so grateful, just hearing all of you folks, and we're just very fortunate, McFarland, you've got some wonderful people on the school board. I, I, I thought what you had mentioned, Harlan, the idea of working with our school district, but that still defeats that idea, that common curriculum. And I was just wondering, I just had an idea, is it possible to have, again, what you're saying, Kate, which is we've got WEVA, but could we get a person or a couple of people, maybe someone who would work with the K5... maybe someone who would work with the K five? And, or I guess really, in some ways, it's two five, right? Or I guess it could be K five.
Well, well, these is.
Yeah, okay, and then, then the six twelve.
Yeah.
And perhaps even break it up by school, maybe you'd have one for each school, and have that person kind of working with those parents, checking on those parents, and helping them some way, informing them, this is what's going on in, in, in your school, your grade at this time, just be aware of that. And just kind of keeping them informed, as opposed to, I kind of feel like these people are out in this wilderness. And when they come back, they go like, oh, my gosh, that was nothing like that. But at least having someone who could at least provide some kind of contact with them.
You're talking about the connection or the lack of a connection?
Well, having, we'll call him a liaison between our school and WEVA, and, and giving him that. It, it's, it's, anyway, look at it, this is what I say, is we're between a rock and a hard place. We're not going to be able to satisfy all these people.
Could I just interject that, again?
Sorry.
WEVA is one of the options, as far as our conversation about targeted approach. Again, our high school students, we have many high school students that have taken other, used other virtual, we have other virtual platforms out there. We have other options to look at for K five. When we talk about a targeted approach, it is that, first of all, we're like, three kids at grade level? Very difficult to plan.
Yeah.
And we don't know exactly what level that those families are looking for versus their commitment to an in-house program, virtual program, that likely have some of that intensity of a, a, a WEVA. So I, I think, Bruce, you're, you're going down the path of kind of how we look at IEP slash R five oh four. I believe that one of the things that, as an administrative team, it's rare, I think, to have your entire administrative team believe that we can find a better way, and we have to be able to look at the needs of this smaller group of families that need these solutions versus our energy going towards something that is going to be watered down. It, it's not, we cannot have bricks and mortar in person and a bricks and mortar virtual option that mirrors a bricks and mortar in person. And that's not even talking about the financials. If, if our board wanted to spend $2 million next year on this to try to go after a perfect solution for the entire student body, so everybody has an option, we'll do that. But if you want us to look at administratively as a team, and certainly our Lauren and Melissa or others can speak to this, we feel as a group, we can go forward with a better plan, even though it sounds odd that we'd be working with lots of different folks versus trying to capture another virtual school. Similar to whether it's WEVA or one of the other fifty-five virtual schools out there. We feel our better, our best energy this summer, and those hundred days include weekends and holidays. And this team has been dedicated to this community and this board since March thirteenth as well. And this team is willing to take their summers like they did last year, many of which did have a summer, weren't under contract, and spent their time developing our best thinking at the time, based on whatever public health put forward to us. I might sound a little passionate about this. But we have a group, particularly many of these individuals that are still here on the screen, that I'm sure would have conversations similar to mine about, we feel like we can look at more targeted and try to work with our families in a better way that make our board and our community as proud as we can make them versus trying to just create something that is so global that might impact three students per grade level. And we're not sure they're going to be able to do that because we've now created something that's for much more than three people, even though three people are taking it.
Right.
So I, I think our goal of that potential action item this evening is to direct us to utilize and develop a more targeted approach. So I, I'll, I'll stop speaking and.
Jeff, that was well said. That was very well said.
Just for clarification, you're advocating for the no vote on this as it's presented here?
I'm, I'm recommending that we, there's not a specific action item other than our administrative team would like to have the board direct us towards a targeted approach versus a all-encompassing in-house virtual.
Okay.
Maybe, so I didn't know if you wanted to hear from those folks at all.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
And I, I know I interjected on your conversation.
You interjected very well.
You covered a lot of bases, Jeff. You, you covered a lot of bases.
You did. And, and my feeling on this whole issue is just that, that's what I was so kind of quiet and almost depressed about, between the rock and the hard place.
Yeah.
We're not going to do anyone any service by saying, let's talk about this a month from now. We're better off saying, you know what? Rip the Band-Aid off, it's going to hurt a little bit, and we'll start to try to solve the problems. We, we just, we, we've got to, we've got to deal with it, I think. I don't think we gain anything.
You're correct, but it.
It's hard.
Just devil's advocate, it doesn't have to be a month. I mean, it could be.
Well.
Someday yet this week.
Okay.
But.
But what do we, what do we gain?
I, that's the point. I, I don't know that we're going to, that we're going to change anything in the way we feel tonight.
Go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, I'm, 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 but I'm not in either of those places. I, I guess, I know, we've been presented with all the reasons why that one won't work. I got that. I'm not convinced the targeted will work. And the reasons why is because of a lot of issues we saw with, when it happened to WEVA, because that's where most people went, with any of those curriculums. So I'm looking for something a little bit towards, if we put it on a continuum, a little bit towards the left, where we are addressing and we're not telling all of those families, who once again can't come back to the school for whatever reason, that they're not part of McFarland. And just saying WEVA, which we know did not work well this year for most of our families, we can't just say, that's not okay for me as a board member.
Christine said most, you know, and I think that's a key word in that, because there was success stories with WEVA.
Yeah.
But.
But WEVA works for people who are knowing that that's what they're going into.
Exactly.
So, so I'm okay if we were to pass something to say, move forward with a targeted approach. But we need to listen to all the feedback from the teachers who say they're coming in with a different curriculum, including WEVA, and these, so how are we going to address that? How are we going to address the McFarland families feeling like they don't belong to the district? So are they open enrolling, you know, like, and how they're not doing any of the extracurriculars? I just feel like we need to address those issues. Either that, or they're going to feel like they're gone. And I don't think that that's, I think we can do better than that. So I'm not on that end, I'm not totally on the tar- I'm, I'm on the targeted end with caveats. That's how I'll say it.
Well, you know, and you can, you can, you can be a bit creative, you know, in terms of something like a liaison type person to keep some, to keep a connection with the school community as a whole. I don't know whether that is a solution, but you can think out of the box, you can be creative. But now, I believe that by, by going ahead and passing this possible action, that we still leave ourselves in a position that we can, we can do what's best for the most kids. And I, I, I always tend to fall back, whenever there's a difficult vote, I fall back to do whatever is best for the most. And this whole fourteen months has been full of gray areas. There's been very few cut and dried decisions that we were able to make. But I, I am, I'm willing to vote this evening. And my vote would be to, to go ahead and, and and let the administrative team move forward with the targeted approach. But we need to feel confident that all those small issues are going to be, not necessarily small issues, all the, all the issues that fall in with a virtual school, you know, we, we need to address those as well. Because I, I'm afraid that there will be less families that feel disconnected from the school only because there's going to be less people in virtual learning. But we're still going to have families out there that are, are going to be disappointed. But those are the decisions we've had to make all year. You know, we, we just can't please everyone.
But remember, like, once again, you're right, do the best for the most. But remember what that ten percent of the, the ones who aren't going to fit is that they are the most vulnerable.
I understand that.
So let, you know, sometimes what's best for the most hurts the least of us. And that, and we need to think about that.
That's true. That's true. Now, is there any other discussion?
Well, when we have people that get, are not able to come to school, we do what we can to help. I, and I think we've always attacked that, and really, what after that, always kind of watched it, to help people. I'm not, I, I feel bad to say that, you know, I, I, I'm not saying like, I don't want to help people. But this is a community school. And, and, and Craig's right, we can't please everybody. The fiscal side of it doesn't add up very well. Finding people to do it is going to be a big challenge. They wanted our curriculum taken care of is what they wanted. And the numbers in anything else that we provide as a district, it doesn't equate to something that we'd go, go through with, because we have such low numbers. So I'm, I'm sorry, and if they, they still are part of our community, whatever they choose, there's, if they, if they go to another virtual school, they're still, still part of our community, still can, the most virtual schools, you still can be active in your district in certain things. But it's going to be a different curriculum, it is going to be what it is, but it is a different school. And I think we, you know, if we're going to make a call tonight, we have to look at that and just make a good call. I understand.
Could I just, again, I want to summarize. Our, our intent is for the greater good. But also, we feel like our best work can be spent to work with, I'm not sure it's ten percent, I think it's a little bit lower than that, by, by numbers. That doesn't mean we're sending out, here are your options. That means we're reaching out and working with families.
That's right.
That means we're leaving the eighty percent that are just chosen to be in, or ninety percent or ninety-five percent that are just choosing to be in-house. We're not talking with them. We're spending our time administratively and with our case managers and our teams to go reach out to those families, to help them more than we believe we could if we just had a generic virtual in-house model, which would have a generic curriculum in some sorts, because there, you, you're not going to be able to, again, mirror. Let's use a, a college analogy. When you had the first start of, you know, in-person versus online learning, I taught both in-person, and then I had to teach two years later outside of in-person, and it was a completely different curriculum, I had to develop different structures, and I had to work with the students in a completely different way. And they had to work harder in the virtual setting, and the instructor had to work harder to engage them. So while I was not a K twelve teacher, I was a instructor in both the real in-person and the virtual setting, with people that are trying to earn masters, you would think you could engage them. We're talking about our, again, I'm going to get passionate about this. We're talking about our youngest of people that are paying their own way to get a grade, like our masters and undergrads. So again, we feel as a team that we can go after this, and this doesn't mean that we're leaving the board out of hearing back from us of how our work is going. I think that's key to this.
Well, I'm, I would be happy to make the motion to move forward with a targeted approach with the, I don't know if caveat's the right word, because I'm making a motion, in the motion, you know, to put forward the plan addressing a number of the issues that we saw with the outside house virtual options. So that would be the motion that I made, that is my biggest concern, to be honest with you.
So mechanically, how do we go about that? Because we've already got a motion and a second on the action item. Do we need to, to amend?
I think you could amend that. Or you could have the other motion.
We should vote?
Dropped?
Yes.
And then go back to Christine's, which is what I recommend, is that you vote on the first one, knowing that you have a second motion that Christine's probably going to reread.
Better this time.
Okay, so, so let's, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Who brought the motion again?
Yeah.
Arlen.
And Kate seconded.
We're going to vote.
Yes, but we'll, we'll vote on that.
Okay.
Knowing that there's another motion on its way. So, discussion and possible action on twenty-one, twenty-two, McFarland School Year Planning. All those in favor, please signify by voting aye. Aye.
Aye.
I thought in order to introduce a second motion, we would vote down this first one.
But we, we're not sure that people aren't not voting this down, so.
Right, okay.
Okay, I misunderstood.
So let's.
I misunderstood that.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure.
Forgive me, forgive me.
All right, all right.
That's why I just sat here with goofy eyes, not knowing what to say.
That's all right.
We'll start over. Discussion and possible action on twenty-one, twenty-two, McFarland School Year Planning. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? No, no, no.
I know, yes.
Mission fails, zero five. Now.
I will make a motion to, I will make, I will move that the administration, who has done a lot of work and a lot of thinking about this, works on a target approach plan, addressing the issues, that is, that addresses the issues that our families faced by moving out of the district, or at least out of the brick and mortar school. And also, it might be helpful to have numbers of who is actually coming back, but maybe that's a little premature. So that's my motion.
Okay, give it to me once more. I'm sorry, I, I.
I make the motion to, to a direct administration, the administrative team, who have done a lot of work on this, to continue forward with a targeted approach for the coming school year, taking into account issues that parents or families brought to us about their children being outside of the McFarland district, to do the best to make sure that they are included. I keep kind of changing it, so that's my, that's my intent.
It keeps getting better.
That's my intent.
But I, I agree. You keep holding it in.
And I know, and I know we're not going to make everybody happy, but I, I just feel like we need to address some of the things. So we need to move, pardon?
To facilitate district connections?
Yes, yes.
That'd be good.
To facilitate district connections and to address some of the things we learned, including what we learned from the teachers about not being able to teach concurrently and so on. But that's, I guess we can discuss that, okay?
Okay. Everyone satisfied with the motion?
Well, we need to.
I would take it.
Forward, we need someone to.
Ask for a second.
I can second that.
Second, Bruce? Okay, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Christine's motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero. So, Jeff?
We will have our first report back June seventh.
Okay.
On the progress, the work we've started.
Okay. Well, I think it was a long circuitous route, but I think we got to a place that we can all live with. And I have all the confidence in the world that our administrative team will come up with. And I have all the confidence in the world that our administrative team will come up with an approach that will satisfy as many folks as possible. Moving on. Action on 20-21-22, McFarland School District Open Enrollment Applications. We must notify open enrollment applicants of whether or not we have accepted their applications. At this time, we seek separate board approval for each exhibit as listed below. Okay, the first is, at this time, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at McFarland School District. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Christine? Second?
I'll second.
Kate? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend denial of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at McFarland School District. Do I have a motion for approval?
I so moved.
Arlen? Second? I'll second. And I'll get in the action here.
All right, Craig, I got you for second.
Thanks. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance outside the McFarland School District. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'm.
Arlen?
I'll second that.
Bruce, second? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0. Action on 20-21-22, WEVA-K-8, WEVA High School, Wisconsin, what is it?
Destinations.
Destination Career Academy, and.
Insight School of Wisconsin.
Insight School of Wisconsin, open enrollment application. Where are we going here? Description, WEVA-K-8, WEVA High School, Wisconsin Career Academy. Must notify open enrollment applicants of whether or not we have accepted their applications. At this time, we seek separate board approval for each exhibit as listed below. At this time, we recommend, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at WEVA-K-8. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Christine?
I'll second.
Arlen? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend denial of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at WEVA-K-8. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Kate? Second?
I'll second that.
Bruce? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at WEVA High School. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Christine? Second?
I'll second that.
Bruce? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. At this time, we recommend denial of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at WEVA High School. Do I have a motion for approval?
I have.
Arlen? Second?
I'll second.
Kate? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at Wisconsin Destinations Career Academy. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll sec, I'll make the motion.
Bruce? Second?
I'll second.
Christine? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend denial of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at Wisconsin Destinations Career Academy. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Kate?
I'll second.
Arlen? Second? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. At this time, we recommend approval of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at Insight School of Wisconsin. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Bruce? Second?
I'll second.
Christine? Okay. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. At this time, we recommend denial of the students listed in the attached exhibit requesting attendance at Insight School of Wisconsin. Do I have a motion for approval?
I move.
Arlen? Second?
I'll second it.
Bruce? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay. Action on open enrollment reversal process. Administration is requesting board approval for the district administration administrator or designee to reverse open enrollment approval denial decisions based on updated data related to expulsions, wait lists, and special education status. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Christine?
I'll second.
Arlen? Discussion?
Is this new?
No.
Okay. This is how it's always been, right?
Hearing none.
Not always how it's been, but the last three years.
Okay. And we should continue to do that, then?
It is a good practice.
Okay.
And we're following DPI laws.
Excellent. Thank you. That always helps.
That'll, that'll push it over the edge.
Or DPI regulations, sorry.
All right, you got my.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Oh, that's really.
I want to stick around, too, but some of these guys want to leave.
I will move.
And I will second.
Yeah, they got the hang of it real quick, yeah. Ah, discussion, I assume there's none. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.